Hey, it's 7 o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for September 15th, 2020. My name is Bob Pryor. I'm the Vice Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And in the absence of our chairperson, I will be serving his chair this evening. Although the stay-at-home order has expired, emergency order number 12, as issued by the Governor of New Hampshire, remains in effect, which waives the requirement that a quorum of this body be physically present in the meeting room. Accordingly, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of the ZBA physically present in the same location. There is a contact number on tonight's agenda, contact information where members of the public can listen in and participate in the meeting, in addition to the number of participants that we already have here, the panelists, as well as the members of the board. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner and under unusual circumstances, the usual rules please note that all votes this evening will be done by a roll call vote instead of by a voice vote. So let's start the meeting by taking roll. When I call on you, will each member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment state their name? And also, in order to conform to the 91A public meeting rules, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting. I'll begin. My name is Bob Pryor. I'm the Vice Chair, and I am alone in this room. Next on my list is Mr. Christopher Merrill, alternate member.
I am Christopher Merrill, and I am home alone at this moment.
Thank you. Next on my list is Ann Sermon, alternate member.
Yes, I'm Ann Sermon, and I am alone in this room.
Okay. Your voice was fairly quiet, Ann. You might want to turn your volume up a little bit if you can. Next on the list is Laura Davies.
Hello, this is Laura Davies, and I am alone in this room with my dog.
Next on the list is alternate member Esther Olsen Murphy.
I'm Esther Olsen Murphy, and I am alone in this room.
Thank you. And finally, Rick Thielbar, full-time member. Who's muted. Who's still muted. Lower left.
So, this is Rick Thielbar at long last. I am alone in my room.
Thank you very much. So, a couple of things. The first is that, under the first application, which is the application of Benjamin and Sarah Anderson for a modification of previously granted variance, through their attorneys, they have requested a continuance until the October 15th meeting. So, our first vote is to whether to accept that or not, although, I mean, I think it's kind of pro forma, but I also think it's a good idea for at least us to go through a voice vote on this. Which brings up something I should have already mentioned. There are six members of the board present this evening. All of the members may participate in the discussions, may ask questions, but only five may vote. So we are going to have several votes, but the primary one is, of course, the application of Ioka Properties LLC. So I'm wondering from amongst the alternate members, which would be Mr. Merrill, Ms. Sermon, and Ms. Esther Olsen Murphy, whether one of you would like to not participate in the voting this evening?
Since you can't say my name, I can step down from voting.
I got really close.
You did get close, I'll give you that.
Thank you. So I encourage you, thank you, Esther. I appreciate that, and I encourage you to participate in the meeting as you see fit. So, first of all, motion to continue case number 20-2, the application of Benjamin and Sarah Anderson to the October meeting of the ZBA.
Aye.
Moved by Mr. Thielbar. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, voice vote. Mr. Thielbar.
Aye.
Ms. Sermon?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Ms. Davies?
Aye.
Here are votes aye. Continued 5-0. Okay, second matter of business, if you don't mind, please. We have a request from Mr. William Curtis of 99 Beach Hill Road, case number 20-11, which we heard and denied last month, has requested a rehearing. And rather than ask Mr. Curtis to sit around and listen unless he really wants to to the entire Ioka case, I would suggest that we move this up in the agenda and see if we can reach a decision on this. So, the request for a rehearing under RSA 677:3, the motion for a rehearing, which is the letter that we have from Mr. Curtis, must state every reason that the decision which we reached last month was unlawful or unreasonable. And I will say that I found nothing in the letter, unfortunately, that goes to our decision being either unlawful or unreasonable. There was really no new information contained in his letter. I think that the decision that we reached, which was a split decision, was based on the fact that any such variance would run with the land, and therefore that the, by allowing the home occupation on that piece of property, we're really opening up a very large window for both Mr. Curtis, as well as for anyone else who follows it. Are there any other comments from the members of the board or questions that Mr. Curtis might be able to answer at this time?
I'm under the impression that they're asking for something different this time, but I'm not entirely sure that they're asking for fewer vehicles.
The number of vehicles was not the issue. It was the existence of the commercial property on that. I don't believe that the number of vehicles was the issue. And once approved, there's nothing to restrict the number of vehicles. I suppose we could look at the minutes from the last meeting.
I think Laura's right in the sense that it was the number of commercial vehicles and what he's asking for perhaps is a redefinition of what is a commercial vehicle as far as he's concerned.
The minutes state that the application had to do with evidence of use to permit more than one commercial vehicle to be parked overnight on the property.
Correct.
So rather than say, rather than the application saying more than one, I think they're asking for two now. Is that correct?
We do not have a specific application. This is not a new application. This is simply a request.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, is maybe they need a new application because they're asking for something different now. Instead of a rehearing, maybe a new application is what's called for.
Well, I tell you what, since I've stepped out of order and since Mr. Curtis is here, why don't I ask Mr. Curtis to explain to us what it is that we would like?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yes, just, I guess I was confused on what to ask for in the letter or what to say. Didn't really have any guidance. Instead of one vehicle, which I'm allowed to have, just one more, which is a personal vehicle, I'm just required to put letters on that personal vehicle, and I guess that makes it a commercial vehicle once I put the letters on it. For DOT, the vehicle's going to be at our house regardless. It's my personal truck. I just need to have letters on it when I drive, and I can't use magnets because it's an aluminum truck. So maybe a reapplication is what I should have done. I really don't know. So a total of two vehicles. We're asking for a total of four, which I really don't need. Just really overshot that number. So...
So the one vehicle which you're allowed to have has your letters on it, has the name of the business on it, has DOT number stenciled on it somewhere. You'd like to do that for one additional vehicle?
Yes, just a regular pickup truck. I think I submitted pictures of the truck with the document. Correct. Just like to add letters to that one vehicle. It's not a diesel truck. Willing to have in the variance, no diesel trucks allowed on the property. I don't own any, and I know that was a factor of the noise of diesel trucks, so...
Would it make sense to ask Doug if a new application is the right way to go?
Yep, exactly. Yes, we got a yes.
Yes, okay.
Right.
Was that Doug speaking?
That was a yes from Doug.
Okay, good.
So, Mr. Curtis, you're willing to provide a new application to Mr. Eastman, mentioning specifically exactly what it is that you would like?
Yes, yeah.
Then, may I hear a motion as far as the rehearing is concerned?
So, just to discuss this, we're not going to grant the rehearing. We're going to entertain a new motion or a new application at a future date. Is that what we're trying to do here?
Doug, you got me on procedure here. Yes, we get a new application, not a rehearing.
So I guess I would recommend that they deny the rehearing, that you deny the rehearing and
Correct.
and advise the applicant file a new application.
Very good.
I move that we deny the rehearing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. The motion is to deny the rehearing and to advise the applicant to submit a new application with a revised estimate of exactly what he would like to do on the property. Mr. Curtis is nodding. I will take that as a sent.
Yes, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. I'll ask you to mute yourself now. So a roll call of the vote. Then we have been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion before we vote? Hearing none. Ms. Sermon?
Aye.
Mr. Thielbar?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Ms. Davies?
Aye.
Here are votes aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Curtis. You're free to go. Enjoy your evening. And now, folks, on the main stage, our chief performance for the evening. That was just a warm-up, guys. Let's see. "The application of Ioka Properties LLC for an appeal from an administrative decision made by the Historic District Commission at their July 16th, 2020 meeting, relative to proposed improvements to the existing structure located at 53 Water Street. The subject property is located in the WC Waterfront Commercial Zoning District. This is tax map parcel 73-34. This is ZBA cas case 20-13. And to avoid confusion, it references HDC case 20-3. So if you see 20-3, that's referring to the HDC. 20-13 is the is the ZBA case. And I would simply like to make note that, while this is, and Ms. Summers, I'll ask you to verify what I'm about to say. When the ZBA hears an appeal of an HDC decision, it is considered a de novo application. So we are not second-guessing what the HDC did. We are making an entirely new decision. Of the decision that was reached by the HDC that is being appealed is strictly relative to the marquee. So it is not necessary for us to discuss or to make further decision on other items that were included in the original application, which were voted on by the HDC. Ms. Summers, would you agree with that?
It is correct on all counts.
Thank you. So I just want to mention for both the members of the board, as well as the members of the public, that this evening's discussion will be exclusively regarding the signage and the marquee on the building. It's not about the windows, or the doors, or the windows, or the repositioning of the mayor building signs, or the balconies, or anything else, all of which has been approved and agreed upon between the applicant and the HDC. So, the other thing that I want to mention before we get started has to do with the public sessions. I anticipate that there will be significant members of, a significant number of members of the public will wish to speak this evening. And I would just like to say that I actually went so far as to look at the RSA today, and the RSA, which is 676:7, says that the ZBA shall hear all abutters desiring to submit testimony, and all non-abutters, who can demonstrate that they are affected directly by the proposal under consideration. The board may also hear other such persons as it deems appropriate. So, in addition to the, obviously to the applicant, all abutters would automatically be allowed to speak. Anyone who can demonstrate that they are affected directly by the proposal under consideration, whether they are an abutter or not. And I really want to take a hard line on what that means by affected directly. Would be allowed to speak automatically. As far as other persons, and I realize that this is a highly charged, potentially a highly charged situation, and I know that on the HDC, as well as at the Board of Selectmen meeting, there were a lot of people who voiced very strong opinions about the marquee and about other aspects of this development, who are not directly impacted by it. Are not abutters, are not residents of Exeter, do not have an economic interest in the outcome of our decision this evening. Those people, I have asked the IT staff to screen, and we will have the opportunity to vote on whether to allow those individuals to speak or not. So the default will be, as per the RSA, abutters, and those who are directly impacted by the decision. And we can then selectively, based on whatever criteria we choose to apply. Is that clear? Am I okay on that with everyone? Does that seem to make sense? Very good. Thank you very much. I'll ask the applicant to make their presentation then.
Before we start, excuse me, Bob.
Yes, Rick.
Do we know if there's a representative of the HDC participating tonight?
I don't believe it would be appropriate for a member of the HDC to participate this evening.
Okay.
Final thing is I'll ask everyone who's not speaking to mute themselves, and to use the raise hand feature, and, which is that if you click on Participants at the bottom of the screen, you will get a column to the right-hand side of your screen that shows all the people that are currently logged into the system. I muted myself, didn't I? How much of that was audible?
I don't think you did. We heard all we needed to, Bob.
I'm going to be quiet now and ask Sharon to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sharon Summers, for the record. I'm with the law firm of Donahue, Tucker &amp; Shindela, and I'm here tonight representing Ioka Properties LLC. As has been stated, we are here for the appeal of a decision of the HDC which contained a condition of approval requiring that we keep the marquee and letterhead in place. After hearing all of the evidence that we intend to present tonight, we request that you reverse and remove the condition of approval and grant the certificate of appropriateness for the application in total as presented on July 16th, 2020. With me tonight are David Cowie and Jay Caswell, who are the principals of Ioka Properties LLC, and also with me are Adam Wagner and Christina O'Brien of Market Square Architects. They are the architects for the project. The presentation tonight will consume parts in chief. One is that Adam will present a brief overview of the project and discuss architectural issues. Excuse me. I will then provide an overview of legal issues and commentary or answer questions of the board, which they are probably best suited to do. I also will be reading one letter into the record at the end of the presentation, a letter of support. And then finally, certainly, I do intend to probably speak probably at length as part of the rebuttal to go into details on some of the provisions of the zoning ordinance or various other documentation. And so I would reserve the right to do that after the public comment period is over. Finally, just before I get started, I do want to comment and apologize on the amount of materials that this board has had to wade through in preparation for this. Yes, I see that, Bob. In preparation for this meeting tonight, my purpose in doing so was to simply provide a place, a package of documents, all in one place that you could refer to as need be, and to refer to some of the highlighted portions of the transcripts so that if you did not want to sit down and listen to all of those many hours of the meeting, that you could do so. Having done that, you may now use it for wrapping holiday presents if you want, or anything else that you want to do. So with that, I am now going to be turning it over to Adam Wagner. He will be making a presentation, and with that, he will be using a slideshow. That slideshow will be submitted into evidence as part of the record. So with that, I will now turn it over to Adam.
Evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can, okay. So am I sharing my screen to present this? Is that the way to do this?
Should be able to.
Yes. You should be able to, yeah.
All right. At this point, you should see the first slide in my slide presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, members of the community. Thank you for hearing us this evening. My name is Adam Wagner. I'm an architect, and I'm a partner at Market Square Architects in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And I'm joined here this evening by Christina O'Brien, who's been serving as our project architect for this project. Now, in order for us to get to our ultimate request this evening, which is to have this board overturn the decision of the HDC to keep the marquee on the building, I would like to start with a brief overview of what our plans are for the redevelopment of the mayor building, more commonly known as the Ioka Theater, and explain a little bit of the history on how we got to this point. And, Mr. Chair, I did hear your point about going over items that are not up for discussion this evening, and so I'll keep those to a minimum. So with that, I will move to slide number two. And I'm going to start here, which is a collection of historic photos of this building. Many of the details are similar to what you'll still see on the building today. The building presents itself in stature as a three-to-three-and-a-half-story building with deeply recessed doorways on the first floor where the main entrances are, punched window openings in the all-brick facade, precast features where there would be windows on the third floor, and a large cornice and parapet completing the top of the building. Decorative elements, including the arches, include the arches over the three central windows on the second floor, flat arches over the windows, and keystones on the prominent arches at the entryways. As we went through this process, the design team spent a lot of time studying the details of this building. There's a lot to it. It first presents itself as a pretty simple building, but there are some very unique architectural details. We spent a good amount of time studying that and really worked to incorporate that into the design of the redeveloped building and the renewed purpose of the building. As you will note in these pictures, the original building did not have a marquee. The building had a simple blade sign, which was posted off of the building, which you see above the triple windows here, that read Ioka Theater. And it had a rain canopy over the front door. This is a kind of a wrought iron metal canopy with tie bars bracing it back to the building. And that canopy really served as a rain shelter over the front door. It did not serve as a component of signage for the theater. Our assumption is that these two shadow boxes that sit adjacent to the entry doors, these are where the announcements were made for upcoming shows. So that's how the advertising was done, as this building was originally conceived. So now I'm going to jump to what our first proposal was to the HDC. And it was really a result of what we had learned about the history of the building. So our first proposal was to recreate a version of the original blade sign, the Ioka Theater sign, as you can see here in this rendering. This was the first rendering that was presented to the HDC. Our intent was to bring back the elevation to more closely reflect what the original architect had conceived of this building some 100 years ago. Now, not shown in this rendering, but you'll see on record, we did discuss this with the HDC at the time. We just hadn't worked out the details of it. We were proposing that a canopy be added to this building, similar to the historic one that was original to the building. We just hadn't worked through that at the time that we presented this. So really, the idea was bring this building back to the origins of the way the architect saw this building. Now, the biggest difference between our elevation here and the original elevation is the addition of the windows. Certainly, when you're a theater building, you do not need a lot of windows. And to that end, the third floor didn't have any windows at all. And so as part of our proposal, we presented the idea of taking the precast sign that reads Mayor Building and these precast components, and moving them from the third floor up to the parapet level so that new windows could be added on this level. And really, this is a matter of function. If this building is no longer to be a theater, which didn't need windows, our new proposed purpose, which included residential living units, would require windows. And so we presented that initially with the HDC. Now, as stated, our design approach was to bring back the building facade back to the way it was originally conceived by the building architect some 100 years ago, and to respect that history through the replication of details and think about how the building would have been designed if our proposed use for this building had been the original use for this building. We made careful consideration to the proportions of the elements on the facade, the rhythm of the fenestration, the materials and the relationship of the architectural details. This was all done in regards to the Exeter zoning ordinance, specifically Section 8.8.2(c). Furthermore, Section 8.8.2(b) of the ordinance requires that we maintain or reestablish the basic appearance of the building at the time when the facade attained architectural significance. And this is important because, as we've already talked about, the marquee was not an original component of this facade. And we would contend that the point at which this building gained its architectural significance was when the building was constructed, not when a piece of signage was added years later. So with this first design approach, we had a great dialogue with the HDC. We dedicated a lot of time to talking through things like simulated divided lights, six-over-one windows versus six-over-six, the importance of maintaining the recess depth at the entry doors. And some of the commission members certainly understood why we had chosen to remove the marquee in this initial design option. After all, the building was changing use. Marquee was no longer needed to announce anything. It's no longer going to be a theater. Furthermore, the marquee obstructed the windows on the second floor, and we'll get into this a little bit further, but it obstructed these three windows, which now have a much more functional use in this building because of the conversion and change of use. Part of the criticism we heard from the HDC when we presented this was that it was felt that the building had lost some of its iconic presence. We didn't necessarily disagree with that point, and we promised to revisit that, and when we returned to the HDC, we had done so. So now I'll move to the next presentation to the HDC. When we returned, we felt that we had a solution that served the needs of the building's new use, but also maintained some of the iconography of the individual IOKA letters that adorned the building. You can see those letters here. And the intent was that these letters would be original letters from the original marquee repositioned on the flat portion of the facade. That way, they could be used on the building. They could maintain the iconography of the building, but they wouldn't obstruct the windows on the second floor. The new canopies were also shown in this design option. And again, they were to reflect the original purpose of the canopy of the building, which was to shelter from the rain, not as a component of signage to the building. Through this design and through these meetings, we continued a very positive dialogue with the commission. And despite the need for some more fine tuning on the design, the development team left that meeting with the understanding that we were on our path to approval based on this design. So now I'm going to fast forward a little bit. This is the elevation design and perspective that was part of the final package presented to the HDC and the one that we ultimately received approval for, the exception of the marquee. As previously shown, it was a design that was sensitive to the history of the building, respective of the traditional details, but also functional for the new purpose of this building that has laid vacant for over a decade. As stated, we received approval on this design that evening, with the exception that the marquee had to stay.
How do you do?
So that brings us to the marquee. And I'm going to ask you all a rhetorical question to think about while I go through the next section of this presentation. And that rhetorical question is this: Should the restoration of the marquee outweigh the restoration of the building? A marquee that wasn't part of the architect's original vision of this building and a marquee that no longer serves a function since the use of the building is changing? So, how does the building sit right now? Having laid vacant for so long, this building is in pretty rough shape. As you can see in these photos, there's even a sizable tree growing out of the roof. With this restoration, there is going to also be a sizable financial commitment, a commitment that for more than 12 years, nobody has been willing to take on. When David Cowie and Jay Caswell stepped forward, they were exposing themselves to a very risky financial undertaking. I can tell you personally that not once during this design process have they asked the design team to find a cheaper way out. They are knowledgeable in both development and construction and have based the design decisions on the architectural value, not the emotional value. During the HDC process, we did hear from many folks that maintained the emotional attachment to the marquee. Some were still residents here in Exeter, but many no longer lived in town. We even heard from residents of Arizona, I believe we had one gentleman call in from. And many remembered the marquee from years gone by. But none of them recalled the decade-plus that the building has remained vacant as a keystone component of downtown Exeter. We also heard from many people who appreciated the undertaking of Mr. Cowie and Mr. Caswell because this building should be brought back to life. It should be repurposed. And ultimately, that's what we're hoping to achieve here. So that brings me specifically to the condition of the marquee. And just like the building, it's in pretty rough shape. Got several photos here showing the condition. And we've gone through an extensive process to evaluate the marquee. We had a structural engineer, a very highly regarded local structural engineer, Jeff Noraki of JSN Associates, evaluate it. And he certainly had some concerns about the marquee and the structural attachment of the marquee to the building. The condition was so bad in fact that there was a public safety concern. And we brought this up in our last meeting to the HDC that if we had not been allowed to take the marquee down, we would have requested that the sidewalk be blocked off for safety purposes. As most of you know, the marquee has temporarily been taken down pending determination of this board. In the picture here, you can see that it is safely in covered storage. And we'll see what happens with the will of this board in terms of its renovation or preservation, whether it's on this building or somewhere else in town. But it is being taken care of, and I know that was a concern of many citizens. So as I mentioned, this project has a tremendous financial risk to it. And there's a tremendous financial burden attached to the marquee restoration if we are forced to do so. We have received several estimates on what it would take to rehab the marquee, and those estimates are well into six figures. And I ask again, for what purpose? It's for a marquee that was not part of the original architecture of the building and that no longer has a functional purpose on a building that is no longer a theater. With these pictures, I just want to bring up the fact that, you know, again, the adaptive reuse of the building includes residential uses on the upper floors. Here's the view from the second floor if those spaces are converted to residential units. The marquee is bright, and it certainly obstructs any view that you would have from those windows. And the concern is that if the marquee is to stay, and it would really be a detriment to the ability to rent or sell a residential unit located beyond those windows. As already stated, the developers are taking a significant financial risk to redevelopment, to redevelop this building, one that no one else was willing to do. And they would like to see a little bit of that risk mitigated by being able to offer very nice residential units that have a view out to Main Street America. And the current sign and its current configuration is blocking that opportunity. So next here, I want to talk about a little precedent here within Exeter. And what you have here are two slides that show Water Street buildings on either side of the Ioka. The top one is from 1980, and the bottom one is closer to today. The black and white photo on the top was included in the application to the National Registry of Historic Places. And the reason why we wanted to show these in comparison is to let you see some of the overall changes that have occurred in even this block of town. You'll notice here on this building, shutters have been removed. As different retailers have come and gone, the new uses have occupied these buildings. All of the signage has been consistently transformed to fit the new use of the new retailer. We see the Ioka Theater, the Mayor Building, in the same situation. The building's use is changing quite drastically from its previous use as a theater. And why shouldn't its signage change accordingly to be more appropriate to the new use? I've got some additional photos here. Again, you can see that there is precedent for significant change in how some of these buildings listed under the Historic Registry have changed over time. And that brings me to this one. So this is another example of a signage change. This one's a little further down Water Street, and it's the current Whirlygigs Toy Store. And from the National Registry application, this storefront previously had a neon sign above it for the Styles Drugstore. This sign was mentioned in the National Registry application as an item of special interest. And as you can see, as the change of use happened, that sign is no longer there. At some point, the neon sign was replaced with a blade sign that was more appropriate to the new retailer and is in keeping with the signage up and down Water Street. These next couple of slides, I'm just going to flip through very quickly, and I just want to share some precedent. We've got three other former theater projects shown that once had marquee signs. The marquee signs have been removed. And yet, the buildings still flourish. And in some cases, I would argue that the architecture of the building stands out far more than it did when it had a marquee in front of it. So this is the Strand Theater in San Francisco. As you can see, it used to have a very large marquee in front that has been simplified. New use brought back to the building. This is the Strand in Lansing, Michigan. Very large sign, marquee sign out front. And I think it could very easily be argued that that was quite a distractor from the architecture that was hiding behind it. The third one here, the Hillsdale Theater in Illinois. Building was repositioned for retail. Again, the building goes on. The life of the building goes on. The use is renewed. And that's ultimately what we're hoping to do here. So in closing, I bring you back to our elevation, our perspective of what was proposed. And I hope that you'll consider our appeal that the historic significance of the Mayor Building, the Ioka Theater, is in the architecture of the building as originally designed by the architect and not in this emotional attachment to a functionally obsolescent sign that was not part of the original building. With that, I will hand it back, but I thank you for hearing us out, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Are you, you have other people to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak for a few moments right now. And I'd also like to ask Adam, will I be able to have access to the slides that you just used? Adam?
I can keep sharing my screen. If you just want to tell me where to navigate back to, I will do so.
Sure. Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I think Adam's done a very admirable job of walking you through the architectural elements of what we've been talking about for the last couple of months. What I'd like to do now is just to spend just a couple of minutes talking about some of the legal issues. As we discussed a moment ago, your job as the ZBA is really to hear this issue de novo, and you are the final arbiter of what the ordinance is going to mean. So, the HDC previously considered this application in the context of, strictly in the context of the Secretary of Interior Guidelines and various elements of the design guidelines of the HDC. I'm asking this board to consider those same provisions, but to consider them in a broader context because I think that the context of this application needs to be part of your analysis. And so what do I mean by that? The ordinance, the zoning ordinance itself and the design guidelines use words like feasible and where possible in terms of talking about repairing or not taking certain actions. However, what that zoning ordinance also talks about is the Downtown Master Plan. And that, by the terms of the ordinance, needs to be considered along with the Design Guidelines and the Secretary of Interior Guidelines. And as we have noted in the appeal materials, the Downtown Master Plan is very explicit in giving direction as to what needs to be done. It states that, from an economic perspective, the town needs to continually examine ways to remove barriers to the occupation of empty spaces and any other conditions that would make the area somehow less attractive for investment. One notable example, discussed at length in the master plan process, is the Ioka Theater building, which closed in 2008 and has been unable to reopen since then. As Adam, and as I think you probably know already, this property was on the market for six years before my clients decided to buy it. The property was in deplorable condition, and as Adam mentioned a minute ago, perhaps one of the best examples of that is there was a tree literally growing out of the roof. As you know, we are not going to use this as a movie theater. We're going to have it as a mixed-use project, a very high-end project. That's what we're contemplating. And we believe, as Adam has indicated to you, that our proposal did comply, or does comply, with the provisions of the zoning ordinance. We also believe that it conforms with the Downtown Master Plan. And as I indicated, I believe that the town does need to support, pursuant to the provisions of the master plan, efforts by people like my clients, who are, as Adam indicated, embarking on a risky financial adventure, to make this whole thing work. The some of the elements, the very practical operational elements that I believe this board needs to consider in terms of figuring out what you need to do to determine whether or not, how to effectuate the Downtown Master Plan, is to think about whether keeping the marquee is going to make things more difficult in a very nuts-and-bolts fashion. So let me talk about that a little bit. As part of the package that was submitted to you, we indicated how this would make life more difficult by keeping the marquee. The one, probably the most dramatic indication is that the cost of keeping the marquee, both in terms of the structural support that's going to be required, as well as the restoration of the marquee itself, will be somewhere between $200,000 and $229,000. I won't go into the details, but as Adam alluded to, there are significant reasons why the structure of the building needs to be dealt with in order for this marquee to be restored. And that is not going to be cheap. Additionally, the restoration of the sign itself is going to be in the ballpark of $86,000. So this is not a small endeavor by any stretch of the imagination. As Adam also mentioned, keeping the marquee makes life more difficult for us in terms of being able to have marketable condos. From a development standpoint, from a financing standpoint, it is critical for us to be able to have those condos be marketable. In order to have the project be viable, that viability is going to turn on our ability to sell those units. Our financing, both the acquisition and the construction costs, will turn on our ability to be able to sell those units and then repay the loan. It's as simple as that. And as Adam has indicated, and as you saw from some of the slides earlier, I won't go through those again, looking at those second-floor residential units on those letters, and there was one photo, I don't know, Adam, if you can bring it up quickly, there was one that showed the scene of the street at night with the car in front of it and the red lights out in front. I cannot imagine that that would, and I cannot imagine how difficult that's going to make it if we have to market the condo units in those circumstances, as opposed to being able to do what we would like to do, a valuable view. In addition to that, one other factor that's going to make, having the marquee remain, that will make life difficult in terms of being able to move this forward, is that it's going to interfere with what we envision the signage for the project is going to be. This project is not going to consist solely of the resident stairs, but it will also contain at least four retail tenants on the ground floor, and then also a restaurant usage downstairs. If we are required to keep If we are required to keep a marquee, that could interfere with the signage, which we are otherwise entitled to have, and it also is going to create operational difficulties. We would have a letterboard there, and there would be conflicts amongst the, even assuming that we wanted to use the letterboard for advertising purposes, and I don't think that that's what we want to do, but there would be conflicts amongst the tenants as to who gets to use the letterboard and what circumstance. And so, in general, keeping the marquee itself does not fit with our legitimate version or vision of the project, and leads to those kinds of operational problems, really, on three different fronts. One is the upfront cost, two is the opportunity cost in terms of being able to get a full return on the residential units upstairs, and then the third is just the decorational difficulties that are associated with having a marquee to be used as either an impediment to our advertising, but at a minimum to deal with in terms of potential conflicts. iconic value as a landmark. And what I would say to that is that iconic is in the eye of the beholder. We have had a number of Exeter residents and business owners who disagree that this has iconic value, and the direct butters to this project have either been silent or have supported our proposal. Now, I know that there were a number of people who voiced strong opinions that this did have iconic value, and so what I would say is that even for the sake of argument that this does have iconic value and that something may need to be done, then what? Our position is that the ordinance itself, as Adam has articulated, as well as the design guidelines and the Secretary of Interior guidelines, speak to things like retaining signs when feasible, when possible, and the master plan speaks to being supportive to developers. In terms of maintaining the downtown, our position is that for all the reasons that we just articulated, that it is not feasible, it is not possible to do the sort of repair and the restoration to keep the marquee in place as was presented in the condition of approval. Adam, towards the end of his presentation, gave you some examples of other areas around the country in which marquees were in existence on former movie theaters, and in a particular note, some of those actually transformed into completely different uses and took the marquee away, and I think arguably, I mean, Adam's the architect, I'll let him speak to it, but I think arguably, the net result was a better building architecturally. I would encourage the board to view those other examples in other parts of the community as being examples of how things can work when you have a repurposed building and when there is absolutely no fungible purpose for a marquee to remain on a building when it is no longer a movie theater. We believe that that is a path forward, that kind of a thought process to save this building, which is ultimately, I think, what everyone is concerned about after six years of seeing that on the market, and which we are poised to do, but we need to be successful in being able to do that and being able to have this be a successful business venture, and yet at the same time, honor the history of that sign. And so we would ask you to remove the condition and allow us to proceed. Before I end, I do have one letter from a person who lives on Water Street and also has an office on Water Street. He was unable to attend tonight, but I would like to read this letter into the record, and then we will certainly provide a hard copy of same to bar for the file. So this letter is from Elliot Berkowitz, and it reads as follows. "I am sorry that I am not available tonight, but grateful to have my thoughts known about the Ioka. When the auction for the theater was held, I was the runner-up bidder to Allen Lewis. I had spent many hours in the theater prior to the auction, assessing what the building needed to be brought back to a viable functioning structure and not as a movie theater. The number-one item on my list was removing the marquee, which besides not being very well-constructed, was oversized for the depth of the sidewalk and not at all attractive. As an owner of several properties on Water Street where I also live and work, I pass the theater many times a day. The town of Exeter and all of its inhabitants should be as thankful as I am that someone has stepped up to the multimillion-dollar restoration of that wonderful old building. There are pictures posted on the doors of the building that depict some vertical signs of the letters Ioka that are classy, elegant, and will forever let people know the name of the building. The first time that I walked by after the marquee was removed was such a total relief and allowed the building to be seen by me properly for the first time in my 35 years in Exeter. I do not know the year the marquee was installed, but there is nothing historic or endearing about it. Do not force the owners to spend a single penny to restore and return it to the building. Sincerely, Elliot Berkowitz." So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions which the board may have, either for myself or Adam or for the developers, and if there are none, we would ask to be able to respond to any of the comments that are going to be made by the public.
Thank you very much, Ms. Summers. Thank you, Mr. Wagner, for that presentation. Very much appreciated. I would like to open it up to the members of the board for any questions that we may have of the applicant, and I'd like to take the first question myself, if you don't mind. Ms. Summers, much of the basis of your argument is that it will be too expensive to maintain the marquee. These are not rookie developers. Were they not aware of the presence of the marquee at the time they bought the building? Were they not aware of the condition of the marquee when they bought the building? There seems to be a note of surprise that's trying to find its way through here, shocked to discover that the building, that the marquee could not be maintained. The developers surely, caveat emptor, buyer beware, they surely knew that the building was in the Historic District Commission at the time that they bought it, and that they would be subject to, any change to the exterior of the building would be subject to HDC approval. And so frankly, I'm really taken aback by the economic arguments that you've presented this evening, because this is stuff that the developer most certainly, or the owners or developers, the development team, should certainly have known prior to making a purchase of the building. I wonder if you'd like to address that?
Sure, and I'll let the developers themselves weigh in as well. I would say that, of course, they were aware that, before purchasing the property, that this was in the Historic District Commission, and they did some preliminary level of due diligence prior to purchasing the property. I think that, as with any development project, a lot of the more detailed construction information came in after the purchase, in conjunction with organizing the financing of the project and so forth, but I think more fundamentally, I don't think that there's so much an element of surprise at the cost as the fact that, even though this is in the Historic District Commission, I think my clients believed, I think very legitimately so, that their proposal, which would not include keeping the marquee, and I think perhaps for some of the reasons that were so eloquently described by Elliot Berkowitz just a minute ago, that the keeping of the marquee would not be an element of what they would ultimately get approval for. And so, and it's not just as well the cost of, the construction cost of keeping the marquee, it's also the fact that they intend to make this, the upper floors of the building, which heretofore have not been used, be viable economically. And so, in their view, it was just not even within the realm of possibility that they were going to be required to keep something of extremely questionable historical value, if at all. I mean, at most, it has, I think even the HDC would contend that it has iconic value at most, as opposed to any sort of true architectural value, such as the mayor building placement up at the top of the building. So no, I don't think, I think that they did go into this knowing that it was going to be in the historic district. I think also that they went into this believing that there was a very legitimate argument that could be made for removing the marquee and for replacing the marquee with something which is going to be far more architecturally suited to this building, as Adam Wagner has indicated.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the other members of the zoning board then, using the raise hand feature, is there, are there any other questions from members of the board for the applicant? I'm shocked and appalled.
Hang on.
Ms. Davies, please.
Thank you. I guess my question has to do with the criteria regarding, when something is adapted to a new use, and maybe this shouldn't even be part of the discussion, my understanding of historic covenants and historic districts is that the attempt is made to maintain the character-defining features, but that it isn't intended to block a new use. Building that has failed to find an economic use for it over a period of years. So I guess I'm wondering, was that part of the discussion, and was that considered? That, you know, in the original, and maybe, and I guess that's a part I'm not clear about, should I not be talking about the original application? But was it discussed at any length about how the character-defining features that were being maintained would enhance the new use, and how some of the features, such as the marquee, would detract from the new use?
Mr. Chair, I can start the response to that, but I also might ask Adam Wagner to chime in as well. I would say, in answer to your question, that the architects were very much, as well as the developers, were very much attuned to keeping the defining, the character-defining elements of the building in place by way of example, and again, I don't want to get too deeply into the initial application, but we took care to take the mayor building parapet, forgive me, I don't know the architectural terminology as well as I should, but we took care to take that, which previously was sitting on top of the second-floor windows, and move that up to the top of the building so as to, in order to preserve it and still really showcase it. So that is just simply an example of the care with which we took to really go through the entire property and try to identify the historical characteristics of the building and show how it was that we are going to preserve and enhance those. However, as you point out, Laura, I mean, one of the key provisions in all of these guidelines or these supporting documents to the ordinance is discussion as to what is feasible and what is possible. And as with some they're pretty elastic, and there's not an awful lot that's provided to give very detailed explanation as to what that means, but our view was that we were, with the exception of the marquee, which we viewed as not being feasible to keep, A, we don't believe that it has historic value, at best, at best. For the sake of argument, we would suggest that perhaps, if it does have iconic value in the minds of some people, then certainly we were willing to work with that to try to come up with a sort of a hybrid solution, a compromise solution as to how to retain some of those, which is why you see what you see on the screen before you, which is to retain the original letters and showcase those with appropriate lighting, and then also to retain the canopy structure, the original 1915. I think the bottom line, and you know, and Adam said this before, and I would, he can explain it more eloquently than I, but it's feasible and what is possible. And it also doesn't, not only doesn't it require you to look solely at the most recent iteration of something, but the ordinance itself talks about looking at what is in existence at the time when the building obtained architectural significance. This building was constructed in 1915. It wasn't constructed during the time later in the 20th century when marquees became available. So I think, I don't know if that's answered your question, but I think that the simple answer is that, yes, we carefully determined what was feasible and what was possible in terms of retaining all of the characteristics, and we concluded that the marquee was not on that list, and we don't even believe it's historic to begin with. So I hope that answers your question, and if it doesn't, if you need more, then I would ask Adam to perhaps chime in.
Is it appropriate to ask if this was a consideration of the Historic District Commission's discussion?
I think you can ask that. You know, in my view, I don't believe they considered the feasibility. I think that they were looking to simply preserve the marquee. Period.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sermon, you have your hand raised?
Me now?
Yes, Anne.
My question is somewhat similar to what Laura just asked about, but maybe a little bit different bent, and I guess it comes down to, does the HDC or does the original, all that goes along with the Historic Commission findings, do you get to pick and choose, so to speak, your historic time period? And by that, I mean, sort of for what Attorney Summers just said, these architects went back to the original architecture, you know, back to 1915, saw what it looked like, and to me, they put the more authentic sign up there as part of their rendering. So that, it seems odd to me that any Historic Commission would kind of then say, well, something that came later was more historic than what was in original. And I'm not saying correctly, but is there anything in the whole managing of Historic District Commission language that says you go back to what's original? Because to me, they did go back to what was original, and that is to me more authentic and what should be preserved going forward, as opposed to something that was then put on, you know, 30 or 50, however many years later. Does that make sense, what I'm asking? What's more, what's more architecturally correct? Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah. I've read the transcripts, but it doesn't seem like anybody really got into that piece of it, because if they did, they would, the marquee wouldn't even have been, it would have been like, well, this is nice to have, but in order for you to be truly historic, you'd almost think they'd be compelling them to use the older one, the one that they came up with, rather than the newer one that came later. I'm not sure who can answer that.
Mr. Chair, are you speaking? I think you're on mute.
Sorry about that, I was on mute. Darn, that was a good talk, too. First of all, I wanted to answer that before Ms. Summers stepped in. Second, it doesn't matter what the HDC did, this is a de novo hearing, this is an entirely new hearing, so I don't know whether they did or did not, you know, decide on a period. What we have to base our decision on is Section 8.8.2B of the zoning ordinance, which reads in part, "If there are to be changes, it shall be to maintain or reestablish the basic appearance as of the time of construction, or to another period when the facade attained architectural significance." So that is the criteria that we have to apply to our decision this evening. Are the developers maintaining or reestablishing the basic appearance as of the time of construction, or to another period when the facade, now, we could make the determination that the facade attained architectural significance. Now, we could make the determination that the facade attained architectural significance at a different time other than 1915 when it was constructed. Um, but that is what we have, that is the basis of our decision this evening is that 8.8.2B. And I'll, I'll be quiet now and turn it over to, to Attorney Summers.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't have too much more to answer or to expand on that, except to say that I, you know, I agree. I think that the board's job here is to determine whether or not, um, the, what we're proposing to do, which is to remove the marquee, will reestablish the basic appearance as, now, as of the time of construction, that's doesn't, that's not really relevant because we're not talking about constructing anything. Um, but the basic appearance, um, as of the time of another period when the facade attained architectural significance. And our position is that that provides, um, the flexibility, it certainly doesn't mandate that, um, this board take the most recent period of history. I think it, it does authorize the board to determine, as the chair has just indicated, um, when the facade attained architectural significance and, and use that as a guiding point to determine, uh, whether or not what is being proposed will change that basic appearance at that instant in time.
I think you were a little confused on something there. The word construction in this sentence refers to the time when the building itself was originally constructed, which would be 1915.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Right. So we have to determine, is it appropriate to take it back to 1915 or is it appropriate to take it back to another time period when the facade attained architectural significance? And I would say that the facade of the building, uh, is our, its architectural significance was attained upon construction in 1915.
And I would, I would concur with that. I think that that is when the facade was created in total.
Members of the board. Mr. Sealbar, are you guys all set? Any further discussion from members of the, uh, board before we open this up to public Hearing none. Uh, I'm going to open this up to the public. I'll ask, uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Wagner, if you'd keep that slide on the screen, which is, uh, the, this would be the version that you would be proposing that we accept should we overturn the previous HTC decision. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. And I will leave the slide presentation up and if anyone wants me to navigate to any of the previous slides, I'd be more than willing to do so.
Thank you very much. So we're going to open this up to the public and at this point we have 28 attendees. Uh, I would like to make mention that, first of all, uh, proper decorum, uh, and good manners are appreciated, uh, including raising your hand if you wish, uh, to speak. Um, IT staff, uh, will be happy to, uh, assist you if you have any questions or any problems. Several of the people who have their hands raised, at least one of them has a phone number rather than a name, another has only a first name. I would add, I would, excuse me, I would ask, please, uh, as we call on you, you state your name and your residence and your connection to the property. As I said at the beginning, um, the zoning board, uh, by following the RSA, uh, for public sessions of this type of meeting, uh, will allow, uh, abutters and others who are directly impacted by the decision that we are forced facing this decision, this evening to speak. Uh, and we may allow at our discretion others to speak. I would hope that we, again, would confine our comments to strictly, uh, the signage, uh, answer the marquee, all of the other issues having been settled. That said, the first hand raised has a phone number only, so I don't know who to call on. That would be 603, uh, 957. I won't read the rest of it. Uh, whoever that is, if they would, uh, identify themselves. And I think you're muted. There we go.
Okay. This is Julie Gilman. I'm, uh, live at 96 High Street. Many of you know me as a selectwoman and a select board rep to the HTC, but I am speaking as a resident and, uh, please call me Julie or Mrs. Gilman. Um, I have several things to comment on, on the presentation that you've been given, but first I have a question. Uh, were you given the materials that the HTC was given, uh, regarding the, uh, from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance and the Division of Historical Resources?
Yes, we were, Ms. Gilman.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other is, uh, just a comment on the building being empty for a number of years. That is not a reflection of its, um, uh, interest from other parties, but by the owner's decision on what they wanted to do with the building. The other thing that I have to say, planning, uh, building department as opposed to posting it on the, um, town's website. That's an argument for another day. Um, just an observation. Uh, we're talking about the period of architectural significance. Uh, you can make argument about when the building was originally, um, constructed, but I would refer to the Secretary of the Interiors, or I'm sorry, the, um, National the adaptive reuse of this building. Um, and I think that's reflected in the record. The Secretary of the Interior Standards do not require a building to be replicated to, back to its original, but there is a progression over time when things change and, and that's been cited, that other buildings have had their original features changed because of an adaptive reuse. Um, and Interior Standards is, let me get to the right place.
What's that that keeps coming along off the top?
Each, uh, each property will be recognized as a physical record of its time, place and use. Changes that create a false sense of historical development such as adding conjectural features or elements from other historic properties will not be undertaken. That's other historical properties. This is not this one. Um, the other is that, uh, changes that happen over time, the, the Secretary of Interior Standards does not require you to bring a building back to its original, uh, appearance. They recognize that change happens over time. Uh, things may be added or removed. The, uh, Secretary of Interior also recognizes that anything over 50 years old is an historical, uh, contribution, uh, to building or an appurtenance. Um, alterations have happened over time. What's there should be, uh, if possible, repaired, uh, renovated, et cetera. I, I, my opinion is that the, the view of the, um, from the residential units out onto the marquee is, uh, not any different from a view looking out over the parking lot that they would see without the marquee, example. I also kind of object to the use of out of state buildings, uh, as examples of what's been done with other, uh, buildings in the same time period and, uh, or over change. And, uh, but we're not, there's, uh, an objection to allowing people from outside of Exeter to speak to this. Um, I, I feel as a resident of Exeter that this is, uh, of interest to the entire town, not just to abutters. Uh, it has been an icon. It is referred to not just through the town, but through the county, through the seacoast area. Um, it's been of interest in, in what it says, what it has to offer, uh, for as many years as it's been, uh, that marquee has been in place. Uh, there is and also, uh, a matter of precedence, which is already brought up, uh, regarding other properties that have changed over time. And as the ZVA, you know that no project defines a precedence for another project that you're considering. So I would say the same thing as using an out of, uh, you know, out of state piece of property that has done the same kind of thing to, um, to consider that this, this property is its own piece and nothing has set a precedent, uh, for you to, uh, refer to. And I think that's all I have right now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gilman. I appreciate that. Uh, the next person whose hand is raised is Patrick Gordon.
Hello, everyone. Um, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, well, I'm sorry. My name is Patrick Gordon. I am an Exeter resident and live at 10 Front Street. Uh, I'm also the HTC chairman and a licensed architect in the state of New Hampshire. So, um, with that, am I, I assume I'm allowed to speak?
Absolutely.
All right. Um, I'd like to start by, uh, talking about, um, Julie did just touch on this. Article 8.9 of the Exeter zoning ordinance states the Secretary of Interior Standards' guidelines as guidance for us as in our decision making as the HTC. And it specifically, uh, guides us to not recreate history, but to preserve the existing history. Um, that was the primary reason why we did not, uh, find favor in replacing the blade sign from 1915 when the instructed, because that sign would have to be recreated from of materials that currently exist or the construction or style of a given time period. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of upholding the HTC's decision to approve the project with the condition that the Ioka marquee stay in place on the front of the building and for the purposes of restoring the marquee and protecting it during construction. I believe that we, as the HTC, met our burden to review and hear the arguments of the applicants and all abutters and ultimately came to the proper decision to preserve the Ioka marquee with our decision in compliance with article eight of the Exeter zoning ordinance. Article 8.2.1 of the zoning ordinance states that the purposes of the HTC are to, A, safeguard the heritage of the town as it is represented in the structures of historical and architectural value located within the historic district. Uh, the Ioka marquee is an iconic sign to the town's heritage, so we believe that we met that burden. To preserve and reflect element, and this is B, to preserve and reflect elements of the community's architectural, cultural, socio-economic and political history. The Ioka marquee was specifically showcased in the 1940s film, The March of Time on Exeter, New Hampshire, which was a newsreel video documenting the his, history of Exeter as a town in New England. So that, that is a, that is a direct, um, uh, tie to socioeconomic and, uh, cultural history of the town. C is to conserve the property values. Um, we believe that the Ioka marquee has been a draw for potential businesses and residents to the, will be a draw for the new res, new businesses and new residents to the renovated property, as well as it could provide an additional revenue source as an advertising space if the owners wished to rent that space out or messages for the community. Um, D is to foster civic pride and, um, the Ioka marquee is the only Ioka in the town or is, is the only Ioka anywhere, the only Ioka theater in the country, and it is the only place that Ioka actually shows up in the town, which translates to Indian Playground. This was the description that the colonists, joining Reverend John Wheelwright, gave to the area after being exiled by the Massachusetts Bay Colony. He then struck a deal with the local, we own it, Sagamore of Pescataqua, to deed and establish Exeter in 16, 1636. The, the Ioka ties back to the establishment of Exeter. So the name Ioka ties back to the original colonists that were in this area. If that doesn't promote civic pride, I don't know what would. E is to promote a, to promote the use of the historic district for the education, pleasure and welfare of the citizens of Exeter. The art, the Ioka marquee is the only sign that is in the style of the 1940s, 50s art deco that still exists and lost and it, it's, it as a physical educational tool is lost. Article 8.8.2F is the demolition, removal or relocation. No structure or portion of this structure shall be demolished, removed or relocated within the, the district without the approval of the commission. To bring further clarity and transparency, the HTC has developed guidelines that were updated as recent as 2016 through grant funding and made available to the public for any person submitting an application to the HTC. On page 01-4, under the heading Guidelines for HTC Decisions for Alterations to Existing Buildings, under the subheading Alterations and Additions, we state it is important that alterations do not radically alter, obscure or destroy, destroy character-defining space, materials, features or finishes. Furthermore, on page 07-10, under the heading Demolition of Historic Resources, we state the following. Once resources of buildings that contribute to the heritage of the community are destroyed, they cannot be replaced. The demolition of all or portions of resources on properties within a historic area is considered a drastic action since it alters the character of the streetscape, the surrounding buildings in the demolition site. This could represent a loss of an educational resource for the community, whether the building was an example of a past construction technique or has associations with significant individuals or events of the town's history. As a result, demolition of historic or architecturally significant buildings or structures is rarely considered to be an appropriate option and is strongly discouraged by the HTC. On that same
Gordon, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is not a building nor an, I, I don't understand what you're referencing there.
It's a historically significant structure.
It's not a structure. Okay. I, I suppose we could argue with that. A building or a structure, I suppose, seems, seems to be something else, but I apologize for
Okay. On the same page, under the subheading, the DC, uh, HTC discourages, we state that the actions that are discouraged are the fol, are the following. Demoli, demolishing or historically significant buildings or structures that do not pose an immediate health or safety hazard. This as the, as was stated in the application, saying that there was a, a threat to the public. We felt during our evaluation that a, a proper structural evaluation was not complete with this, uh, this building. They did hire a structural engineer to write two separate letters. Uh, in the second letter, I believe the structural engineer was on site, our own, um, building inspector, Doug Eastman, was there as well. Uh, the bottom panels of the marquee were never removed to view if and how the marquee was attached to the building. And their, the letter stated that it was only a single attachment of the chain from the top. Uh, if you look on the building now, there is, were in fact 14 staggered bolts that connected that marquee back to the building, not just the single chain. And, um, this was not raised as an issue to, to, a threat to the public until after the HTC, uh, stated that there was no evidence to find that it was an immediate threat to the public. So in addition, having a historic feature not serve as it, not serve the new use of a building in a change of use has no relevance as to whether it should be saved or not be saved and has never been grounds for granting the demolition of a historic feature. Not to mention that the marquee staying will not prevent the new use of the building. If it does stay in place, if it was required to be, uh, reattached to the building, the building can still function as retail commercial space below and residential space above. That does not change. The burden of restoring the marquee and to keep it on the building is the burden of the owners and these costs to do this have never, again, never been grounds for granting the demolition of historic, uh, structure. In, in all demolition, in all development, there's always contingency that's put into In, in all demo- in all development, there's always contingency that's put into a project prior with the- properties are also um, considered to have the highest contingent for, for loans or potential construction costs. This should not be a shock. In summary, I do not envy the position of the ZBA right now. Having to review this complete application and to render a de novo decision tonight on information and education experience is not your primary focus. We as the HDC include three licensed architects, two art and architecture historians. We have dedicated our careers to studying architecture and history and we have used this knowledge to render what we believe to be the most historically appropriate decision. In closing, I ask that you trust our process and our professionalism has met the burden as a commission and that you uphold our decision to not allow the Ioka marquee to be permanently removed and destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I appreciate that very much, as I appreciate the work of the HDC, the time and effort that you and the members of your committee put into uh, reviewing uh, the application over the course of, of many months. Uh, as with the ZBA, the HDC members are all volunteers uh, and bring their own expertise, just as we bring our expertise to the decisions that we make. Then the, uh, I would note that the first two members of the public who spoke, I didn't need to ask for their, where they were from because I knew who they were. Each person that I identify not only has to give their name, but their location and what their connection is to the property. And again, we will make a decision uh, as to whether uh, people who do not have a direct who are not directly impacted by the decision that we reached this evening are allowed to speak or not. That said, the next name on the list with their hand raised is Laurie A. Couture.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, before we continue, I just, I just want to note, I, I, I didn't interrupt the last two speakers. Um, I know Julie Gilman indicated that she was speaking as a resident and Patrick Gordon- so, but I, I do think that they, they sailed pretty close to uh, essentially revisiting all of the HDC uh, matters, which I know is not really before this board. So I would, I would hope that the remainder of the, of the, um, of the speakers tonight are simply going to address uh, what is before this board as opposed to um, essentially rehashing what, what the HDC said. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Couture.
Yes, hi. Uh, my name is Laurie A. Couture. Um, I am a longtime former resident of Exeter, almost twenty years, but I live in Newmarket now. And the reason I'd like to speak is because I'm the person who's bringing forth the legal objection along with the abutters and I've spearheaded the efforts to save the marquee. I was a former employee of the Ioka when I was fifteen years old in nineteen ninety and know its history quite intimately and I have a lot of connections. My grandmother was a longtime town employee with the Exeter Police Department, the Exeter Highway Department, Kurtz's and-
May I, may I interrupt? Your, your- Where your mom worked is really not relevant to this.
Grandmother. Yeah. I just wanted to establish that I have ties to Exeter. I was a twenty year, almost twenty year resident.
Okay, but you no longer live in Exeter nor do you have a direct connection to the property any longer. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Fine. Um, I will ask the members of the board uh, whether uh, we feel by voice vote that Ms. Couture should be allowed to speak. And I've got the wrong screen open in front of me. So, uh, let's see. Uh, who's still here? Mr. Merrill? Are you comfortable having Ms. Couture speak?
I would say since she's not a town member, I would say no.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Sermon?
I'm voting nay because she's not affected directly and that was how the criteria was listed for how we would allow folks to speak tonight. If they're affected directly or are they abutters? And that would make my vote nay.
Mr. Seelbar?
Nay.
Ms. Davies?
I would- if we could and then if there's, if time allows, hear from other parties. So I would prefer not to hear from someone who doesn't live in Exeter right now.
And the chair will agree with Ms. Davies. Um, Ms. Couture, I'm going to ask you to please continue your attendance at the meeting until such point as we uh, feel that we uh, could get back to you. Are you comfortable with that?
A part of the legal case.
I don't know about any legal case. That's not my purview. I know that you have submitted a letter to the board uh, along with someone who uh, leases a space, not in a butter, but someone who leases space uh, next door to you, uh, next door to the theater.
I'm sorry, um, with uh, Scott Ho- attorney Scott Hogan-
Yes.
is actually representing me as well as the abutters. Yeah.
Right. Well, they're not abutters. Right. They're, they're, they own a business next door, but they're not abutters. And a butter is a very, is a precise legal term that does not qualify in this case. Well, I'm very sorry, but I'm going to ask IT if you could, um, we'll, we'll pass on Ms. Couture for the time being.
Bob Pointe-Vorder?
Sir?
We took a vote and three said nay and two said yes. Seems to me the issue is dead.
I would agree. The next person on the list is Florence Ruffner. You're muted, Ms. Ruffner. There we go.
Hi, are you there? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Pryor. Uh, I'm Florence Ruffner. I live at Five Pine Street and may I speak? I'm not in a butter, but I am a business owner downtown and a resident.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and listening to all of the meetings and everything, I, I really feel like people should applaud Mr. Caswell and Mr. Cowley for stepping forward and, and being really willing to tackle this major project downtown. I think their proposal looks fabulous. They're still honoring the fact that it was the Ioka. And I personally, I've resident of Exeter for forty-three years and I've been in real estate for thirty-nine years, so this is also my professional opinion. I don't see the merits of retaining a marquee that will no longer be a theater. And I think uh, for condos looking into the back of a sign that really has no function would adversely affect the marketability of condos in that building. And I, I think their proposal is beautiful. It's a classy-looking building and I'm finished, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffner. I appreciate that. Um, the next person with their hand raised is only identified as Tyler.
Hi, I'm Tyler Livermore. I'm a resident of Exeter. I live at seven Exeter Falls Drive. I'm in Exeter. From my point of view, um, the, the marquee is a bobble that was added on at, at some point and, and has no, clearly has no historical value. As was pointed out, it may have some iconic value, but even that's questionable. You know, this facility has been closed and slowly deteriorating for years. Is architecturally inappropriate. It doesn't fit the town. It's historically incorrect. I mean, and we have photographic, um, I notice proof of, of that, uh, that's provided to us by the architect. So, um, you know, I think that it's pretty much, um, and a open and closed case here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Livermore. I just want to mention before we go on to the next uh, member of the public that if people could be conscious to keep their microphones muted, please, in between sessions, because I can hear some background noise. Uh, and so I just want to make sure everybody mutes when they're not. Person in the list with their hand raised is Dawn Jelly. And you're muted. There we go.
Hi, this is Dawn Jelly. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Dawn Jelly. I live at four Nelson Drive in Exeter. So I am an Exeter resident and I also live within walking distance of downtown where I often shop and walk my dog. Am I okay to continue speaking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So thank you very much for your lengthy consideration. As you know, the Ioka marquee has been part of the Exeter downtown since the nineteen forties, but had almost forty years of history even before the downtown historic district was established in nineteen seventy-eight. So it clearly falls within the historic Exeter zoning ordinance criteria of being constructed more than fifty years before the building permit application. But tonight I'd like to speak to the preservation of Ioka marquee, particularly in regards to eight point two point one, section B of the ordinance, to preserve and reflect elements of the community's architectural, cultural, social, economic and political history. It's easier to see from the many photos of Exeter downtown how prominent Ioka marquee has been as an architectural element. But we should not dismiss how important the Ioka has been in our cultural and social lives, past and present. This, of course, also includes Exeter's oral history of residents, past and present, their heartfelt stories and memories of Ioka. In fact, it's almost impossible to find anyone who can speak of a time when the marquee was not there. These cultural and social elements may feel less tangible, but are just as important from a historical point to the fabric of our town, of Exeter residents, both past and present. In the past, the Ioka marquee symbolized the heart of the downtown arts and entertainment culture and social scene. It's no longer a theater, but still a significant presence in our downtown culture, absolutely iconic and uniquely Exeter piece of art for us to share with generations to come. It is very exciting to think that the mayor's building now has a new chapter, but it's also just as important for us not to lose the Ioka marquee, its unique place in our culture, both in the past, but also our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jelly. There was another hand raised, but it appears to have disappeared. Oh, there it goes. The next name is, uh, I apologize, I, I, my Irish pronunciation is terrible. Myred Carr? How did I do?
Um, it's pronounced Ma-ra-d Carr.
There you go. I, I didn't do well.
All right.
Yep. Tell us who you are and where you're from.
All right. So my name is Ma-ra-d Carr and I am an Exeter resident. I live on Four Cross Road in Exeter.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, I'll try to stick to facts and not, uh, my emotional attachment to the sign, um, since that you're considering the historical and architectural significance tonight. So I'd like to say, so first of all, the sign, the Ioka marquee has existed as a part of the Ioka since at least nineteen forty, possibly before that. We know it's been there since nineteen forty because of its- the March of Times movie about, they included the clips of Exeter. And I wouldn't, I would say anything that's uh, been around since has historic significance. And I would not think that there would be argument otherwise. Um, it is an example- and it includes like antique Wagner leathers and, um, and the neon lights are, were uh, cutting edge for the time, which is why that, that is why that sign was created at the time. It is not even the second marquee that was made. When the building went up in nineteen fifteen, they showed the images of one, the sign that was there. And then by nineteen forty, they had already had a second design that they already, they also took down and decided on this, the, what is, I would say should still can- count as the current marquee, which has been up for now eighty years. And I would personally would hope to see it be up for a hundred years. It's, it is significant from a historical, architectural standpoint and also just a historic standpoint of the town. There's also the social significance since it was a theater and the, uh, the significance of when it welcomed home, uh, Korean vets from the war. From the Korean War, it welcomed home all of the soldiers that returned home and uh, and I'm sure other pieces of history that someone else that knows more about would be able to mention. I, and I'd also, uh, is it possible for me to just share? I have a statement from another Exeter resident, Sheila Mullin. Can I share it?
We have a, we have a difficult time verifying something like that, given the, the remote nature-
Okay.
of the meeting. So I, I would, I would, I'm sorry, but I don't think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So I guess I'd just like to say that the Ioka marquee is a historic, cultural and artistic landmark for our town and I think without it, downtown looks bare. I know that when I currently pass the Ioka without the marquee, my mind still fills in where it is. Uh, a lot of the time I drive home, um, when the sun's setting and I'll just think it's there and it's not. And it, it really is, it's like the downtown's missing the bandstand for me. I think points that Adam, the architect, made, where, where he showed older pictures of the street where the Ioka is, I think it looks exactly the same pretty much, other than some of the, like the tree that's now there and a few of the signs, but nothing that I would consider the Ioka marquee to be an architectural point. No, it's not just a sign. Building. It, the parts that existed before it were not up for very long. The marquee that has been there has been there for eighty years and that is the, what is the, considered the Ioka marquee. That is what the original built, developer, owner of the mar- of the Ioka wanted for his theater. And I consider that to be the historic touchstone for the theater. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carr. I appreciate your comments. Uh, the next person with their hand raised is Joe Lewak.
Hi, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're all set, Joe.
Thank you. I'm a res- uh, resident of Exeter. My name's Joseph Lewak. I live at twelve Exeter Highlands Drive and I also have a business in Exeter. So, um, I uh, just wanted to know if it would be okay if I spoke on the matter as I was involved with the Exeter Theater Company back-
Yeah, right ahead.
Thank you. When I was involved with Exeter Theater Company, I got to know many fine people. Uh, I heard so many great stories and I, I lived and loved the theater as much as any person could, really. I'm a nostalgia buff. I collect memorabilia. Um, I love all of it. And so when I found out that the use was going to change, I went to the owners and I talked to the new owners about their plans and so forth, realizing that the inevitability of it being a theater again was probably nil. And when I heard their plan to modify the space and to do the things, you know, that have been charted so far that you've been seeing, I was taken by their, you know, their approach in that they're, you know, they're going after something that is a difficult endeavor. There's no doubt. And, and I said, well, can we pay homage to the past? Can we get involved in some level? Can I help? Uh, I was part, a lot of the meetings for the old Exeter Theater Company were done at my residence and so I was intimate with the people that were involved in it. And so I got involved and I said, look, what can I do? I know that life goes on, things change, you know, you, you, people go, buildings go. You know, we, we go through the lineage of time and, and we have to adapt and, and go forward. And one of the things that's been holding this sign back or this building back uh, seemingly moving forward seems to be the, the sign. And I, my question, I guess, in the whole thing that, that concerns me the very most is that, you know, we're, we're going to uh, go forward in, in the moments after this meeting with whatever the decision of, of your board is. But what, what burden do we really want to place on a business owner? What burden do we really give a, a business uh, endeavor of this magnitude? Where they're going to, for me as a resident, I care about my tax base. My taxes haven't gone down since the twenty-two years I've started living here and- And I'm looking at the seven times, eight times tax base that they could create with this property. And I'm wondering, why would we stand in the way of this economic development opportunity as, as a body of, of concerned citizens? Uh, to me, the move to go forward is what it is. And we all need to just live with it and move forward in a, in a sympathetic manner and try to, you know, respect the past as best we can. But in the early onset of one of the meetings, I heard, uh, with respect to the, uh, proposed use of a vertical sign was, uh, from the chairman himself, Pat, I guess it's Patrick Gordon, who commented that he said, why would you propose a sign of vertical nature from the twenties when it's, when no sign, when there's, you know, it's not going to be a theater anymore? And I thought, well, that's, that's a, you know, a nice way of looking at it. But still, I went, wow, I love the fact that they're respecting the homage and paying homage forward to the period when, uh, you know, the Ioka is a significant name in this town and something that people want to remember. So I was, I was happy with that. And I went into the Ioka Theater as a friend of the community of all of us. And I personally spent my time removing all the artifacts that I could and putting them in storage and, uh, at the request of the owners of the building. And including the projectors, the carbon arc projectors and all these things. And I put these things away in order that we could represent in the future, when there's a, a lobby or an elevator room or something like that. My, my true hope and passionate hope was to see that happen. And to see, uh, the, the old carbon arc projector in a window box lit up, showing a movie splattering in the background, you know, in its arc way they did it. So anyways, my, my point is, I'm involved, I'm still, I was involved. It is an emotional issue for the town. I do understand, I lived in a town where the marquee went away in California. And I lived through this. And, you know, it was upsetting at first, but, you know, you move on. And I think that as a whole, we need to look at the economic wellness of, of our town and what's best going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewak. I can tell you're involved in the theater. You've got a great voice. So the next person, um, Ms. Kar, you've already spoken once, so I'm going to take you out of order. Uh, and I'm going to go on to the next name, which is Kristen Pullen.
Yes, hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Kristen Pullen, and I live in Kingston, New Hampshire. But I own two properties that, but the mayor building. Uh, one is Water Street and the other is forty-two B Water Street.
What buildings are those, Ms. Pullen?
Yeah, I also have two businesses, um, uh, Ganesh Imports and Serendipity.
Please go ahead.
Um, I'm, okay. I'm in full support of the removal of the Ioka Marquis. The Ioka has been neglected and abandoned for so many years that I think that saving the building is more important than, than the sign. And the developers' plans are so beautiful and seeing the renderings, um, it's a huge improvement that I think will only bring positive change to our downtown community. And one thing I wanted to also say as a business owner, um, I am concerned about the marquee, uh, staying because I think it would create confusion because it's no longer a theater. And with the plans that these guys have with four retailers and a restaurant going in, I just wonder how, how these businesses are going to, you know, have signage and frontage because that's the most important thing about having a business is saying who you are. And would they have to all share the marquee? I just don't really know how that would work, and that wouldn't really be helping any of those business owners. So I think that that's something important to consider.
Y'all done?
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Pullen. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, next name on the list is John Siegel.
Hi, this is John and Jennifer Siegel. We are also a butters at sixty-five Water Street. Our business is a picture's worth a thousand words, and we have been there for thirty-five years.
John, I'm, 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 I'm going to challenge you, you're not in a butter because you don't own the building, but I'm, but you do have an economic interest in this. So, uh, we're more than happy to let you speak.
Uh, I, I would like, this is Jennifer. I would like to say, I, I think what they're, what they're doing looks quite nice. I like the, the way they've raised the sign for the mayor building up on top. I like the way the windows have been done. I, I do think, looking at it though, I, I'm missing some of the style and sass that that marquee offered. And it was very distinctive and you knew you were in Exeter when you saw that marquee. This building, handsome and tasteful as it is, could kind of be anywhere. And I wish that there was something of that original verb that was present in, in this new, um, awning and the, the sign. Like, what if you had the awning, if, if it was flattened up against the building and you could put the names of the stores, like theater letters, in the awning? You know, like, is, is there a way to take that marquee art, that old marquee and morph it into a more modern interpretation? So it still has some of that style?
Thank you.
Um, thank you very much. This is the first time the zoning board of adjustment has ever heard the words "style, sass, and verb" in one of our presentations. That just, that just doesn't happen at ZBA. It's usually about "I want." So that's cool. Thank you very much. There are no further hands raised. Uh, given the awkwardness of the situation, uh, I'm going to make one more call before we move on, and there we go. Oh, I should have kept my mouth shut. Now we got multiple ones. Uh, the next name with their hand raised is Karen Weeks.
Hello.
Hello.
You can hear me. My name is Karen Weeks, and I live in Exeter, at Seven Penn Lane in Exeter. And I'm sitting here and I'm just listening to, um, both sides. And I feel like, um, the Julie and Patrick were very clear on, um, Article Eight and how the decision at the HTC came about. Um, since then, the other side has been more about feelings, which is interesting because I believe that was their major complaint, was that there was too much feelings that went into it. Um, how they feel it should work, how they feel it might be trouble for, um, you know, the new store owners in the, in the mayor building. Um, and, and so on and so on. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear that this hearing is to be decided upon Article Eight and what is being discussed is HTC's decision that the marquee must stay on the front of the building. Um, that marquee has been on the building for eighty of the, what is it, a hundred years, a hundred and five years of that building? So it's significantly impacted the facade of that building for most of its lifetime. And because of that, I believe that it is, well, historically significant. Um, and any argument to say it isn't is, um, really not giving it its, its, its due. And I don't want to get into all the feelings that surround it. But I think that it's important to consider, um, some of the feeling significance. The fact that it, you know, welcomed soldiers back from the war. Um, all those things are significant. Um, whether you think it's touchy feely or not, it doesn't matter. It's significant. We're talking about lives of people. Kind of off base of where I was going, but my, my point is that, um, we need to really focus in on Article Eight. And I believe that the few people who have talked towards that have done an excellent job in, in Native Point. And I, and I hope that this, um, decision is based on, on the facts and, um, on what it's supposed to be based on. And then I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. I appreciate your comments. Uh, the next person with their hand raised is identified only as Scott.
Hi, Mr. Chair. This is Scott Hogan. Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm a local land use attorney. I've been working with Lori Couture and John and Jennifer Siegel, who, who just spoke to, uh, the board. So if I may, I'd like to address you very briefly on this.
Um, I just want to make note that we do have your letter, which is the objection to an appeal of administrative decision, uh, that was received on September eighth. So we do have the, we do have your letter. Part of the record already.
Thank you. And, and I just wanted to comment, and, and I appreciate being able to comment briefly on
If you stop for a second, I just want to do a quick survey of the members of the board to make sure that we are uh, in agreement that Mr. Hogan should speak, um, during this meeting. So I'm just going to do a very quick sort of survey, if you don't mind, Mr. Hogan hanging on a sec.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
I would say nay.
Uh, Ms. Sermon?
I'm trying to stick with what the chair guided us with initially. Um, would you say that this falls under someone who is affected directly? But they're basically representing the person that we didn't allow to speak, so I'm a little conflicted.
Well, Mr. Hogan represents several people, one of whom is somebody from out of town that we did not allow to speak. One of the people has already spoken.
Right. Okay, I'll, I'm going to vote yes.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Davies, are you okay with letting Mr. Hogan speak or not?
Um, I'm, I'm opposed to that.
Mr. Thielbar?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I've not seen the letter. Do you?
Uh, it was one of the documents that we did receive. Given the fact that you've not seen it, Mr. Thielbar, I think that would be an argument to let Mr. Hogan speak so that you are, you can read the comments that he's already submitted to the rest of us.
Okay.
Not leading the witness, am I?
Yeah, you are. I'll say yes.
Chair votes yes too. Go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Board. And, and for the record, again, um, I've been in and around Durham and Lee in the Seacoast now for the better part of thirty years, uh, practicing land use law for about twenty-five. And historic preservation has been a lot of my practice and some of it in Exeter, uh, around the Ambrose Swayze Estate several years ago. And so in this case, the only thing I wanted to say tonight, I understand that the zoning board is looking at the HTC's decision de novo tonight. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, in my experience in these matters, the HTC Conservation Commission, you know, they're often, um, you know, the neglected siblings in the land use family, some in, in, in many ways. But even though this is a de novo review by the zoning board, the, the decision that the HTC, the process that they went through, the expertise that they brought, um, I think was, I think they had an exemplary process. But I wanted to note the fact that the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance and the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources, uh, both of those entities submitted letters back directly to the HTC uh, before they made their final decision. And then they both submitted, uh, separate letters to this board for your review of the HTC decision. And, you know, that's really notable in my experience in terms of, uh, what they both described in terms of the historic provenance of the building, of the marquee itself as a separate structure. So I, I just wanted to, you know, kind of reiterate the fact that even though this is de novo, um, you know, the HTC, every board in Exeter, I think, goes about its business in a really deliberate, explicit way. I know there are a lot of decisions, a lot of different opinions, uh, about the marquee itself. But I hope that when the ZBA looks at this and look, you'll have, your decision is de novo, but it, it would also be, uh, reviewed in the context of what the HTC actually found and did, um, you know, when it, you know, when you, you go there. So looking back at it, you know, I don't think, I think we all understand from the conversation tonight, it's not a financial issue in terms, you know, the marquee could be, uh, restored. Uh, there are folks that would, I think, you know, put money towards that. So the financial aspect of it, I don't think is, you know, really, um, you know, one of the aspects that we're talking about in a substantive way, uh, in, in real terms. And ultimately though, you know, when you look back on this and whether it has historic value or not, please look at the two groups who submitted their letters to you because they really have expertise in this. And the HTC took their opinions on that. And ultimately, when you look to this, you know, the structure that we're talking about, and I appreciate how the board said, the other development aspects of this property um, aren't what we're talking about. It's really just, you know, down to the marquee. And so when you look at the regulations themselves, you know, and this, and it is a structure, you know, it is a feature of the building. And whether, you know, it obtained, you know, when the period was that it obtained architectural significance, the marquee is the, is the, is the feature that, that we all, you know, know when we're talking about, uh, what obtained architectural significance on the, on the front of the building. And so I would just ask you to, you know, while it is de novo, to respect the process that the HTC went through, to respect the agencies that gave them expertise on this. And if there are members of the zoning board tonight who didn't see, you know, either my objection or the letters from those two groups, I would ask that you all look at that, you know, before you ultimately conclude your deliberations and make a decision either way. And I really appreciate the time for you hearing me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hogan. I appreciate your thoughts. Let's see. So there are two people with hands raised, both of whom have already spoken before. Before we go back through the cycle, uh, is there anybody else who would like to speak who has not yet spoken? Okay. I should stop saying that, shouldn't I? Okay. The next name on the list is Linda Wade.
Yes, hello, uh, um, Shamon Pryor. I actually, uh, was born in Exeter and I've lived there most of my life except the last few years. So I suppose that, um, disqualifies me.
Well, I, uh, I was born in Exeter and I'm still living here, so I guess that qualifies me. So, yeah, I'm, I'm afraid so that you, if you're no longer a resident and you don't have a direct, uh, if you're not directly impacted by the decision personally, as in owning a business or being in a butter or anything like that, um, then I would have to say that we're probably not going to, uh, let you speak.
The only thing I was going to mention was a couple of things.
You're speaking, and so
I'm sorry.
I just kind of said that you, you haven't explained why we should let you speak. So if I was to ask people if you could, if you could speak, I'm sure they would all vote no. Is there a compelling reason why you feel that you should be allowed to speak?
Um, because I wanted to mention the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation and
Secretary of the Interior standards have been well-covered by Mr. Gordon and several other speakers already this evening. So with apologies, I think we're going to move on, Ms. Wade.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, the other new name on the list, uh, is John Scalomero. With apologies if I pronounced your name incorrectly, John.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
So you'll have to forgive me. Uh, I am an Exeter resident. I am a current resident. Uh, I also grew up in the town of Exeter. Uh, will I be allowed to speak?
Absolutely.
Sure. So you'll have to forgive me. It's a little last minute. I, uh, am currently driving back from a, uh, work appointment. Sure. So you'll have to forgive me. It's a little last minute. I am currently driving back from a work appointment. However, I do want to mention a couple of things. They may have already been well...
I'll hop over to the side of the road before you speak to...
Absolutely. Safety first, my friends. Safety first. And I think that's part of what makes us unique here in the town of Exeter, is our respect not only for each other, but our respect for the rule of law. And I'd like to bring up a couple of things that just punched into my mind here while I was reviewing the responses so far and what we've dealt with so far. I just want to mention two things. First of all, as a current resident, I feel like 8.21A, safeguarding the heritage of the town as it is represented in structures of historical and architectural value. In the HBA conversation, I did speak up about a different marquee and a different situation that had historical as well as architectural value, as well as the impact that had to the community in question at that point was more Oklahoma. And I feel like the marquee, not just on feelings, but just based on simple architectural representation, it represents an interesting Art Deco and unique Art Deco piece of architecture that should be safeguarded. And second of all, I'd also like to represent the 8.21B, preserving and reflecting elements of the community's architectural, cultural, social, economic, and political history. As was mentioned earlier, the marquee itself, less so the building and the state of the interior of the building, is a representation of Exeter's cultural, economic, and political history. One might even say that the marquee, if you think about the way that it presented a way for the town to communicate to itself as well as to communicate to others, also presented a historical element of the community's history. And therefore, as a current Exeter resident, as a previous Exeter resident, as an Exeter resident throughout my entire childhood as well as currently, I believe that it should be, you know, the historical commission's decision should be not only respected and upheld, but that regardless of your opinions of Art Deco and of your opinions of Art Deco as an architectural style or the marquee in Exeter itself, that that architectural style, based upon the legal standing here within 8.21As and A and B, should be preserved and, regardless of appeal, that the historical commission's decision should also be respected. More importantly, and I think this may be going off script a bit, but I think it goes back to what you mentioned earlier about me pulling over to the side of the road and making sure that I respected not only my fellow citizens, but I respected the rule of law. And I think that it is very important as we consider what we do with this marquee, this part of our town and our part of our town's history, that we respect one another. But more importantly, we respect the rules of law, stricture, and policy that we as a town and we as a community have agreed upon. And with that, I cease my comment. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, John. I can assure you that the zoning board of... Oh my God, I just put myself in the HTC. That the zoning board respects the law too. That's what we're all about here. But sometimes the law requires interpretation. So one more name on the list who has not already spoken is Karen Belton.
Hello, this is Karen Belton. I am a current Exeter resident, 3 La Perle Avenue. I've lived here for 28 years. I think there's a lot of emotional, you know, feelings with this, but I think there is interpretation of the law. And I think there's a question of whether this can go back to the 1915. You know, I think that 1915 representation that they've presented is, should be considered because I think the law is up for interpretation there. And personally, as an Exeter resident, I don't miss the marquee. I think this brings back the character of the architecture. I think it also represents probably more of what the master plan of Exeter is going towards. So I would be in favor like Ruffner and Tyler and other people that have spoken that the developers have taken on a great thing by restoring this iconic historic building itself that has been vacant for so many years. I think this is in the town's best interest for somebody to save this building and restore it to a historic period that I think is valid. And to me, it looks great. So I think that should be considered. And I respect the HTC. We're into history. We're into architecture, art history. I think the architecture firm and the developers have done a great job in considering all of this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Belton. I appreciate it. The last name that has not already been spoken is Nortom3.
Mr. Chair, the Zoom dashboard is currently saying that this user is located in Virginia. If they do wish to talk, I would ask that they leave and rejoin with a full name. But at the moment, I, as a person working at Exeter TV, I don't feel comfortable allowing them to talk on the air at this moment.
That would be fine. Thank you. I'm sorry. I don't know who's speaking. I don't know what your name is. Oh, it's Daniel. Okay. Thank you very much, Daniel. I appreciate it. So if Nortom3 would like to speak, they should rejoin with a full name so we know who you are. And we would certainly consider whether you have an interest in speaking this evening or not. That said, there are three names left. Nortom3 is gone. There are three names left. Two people we've spoken for, and Lori Couture is back. So we're gonna start in order, which is Patrick Gordon. Mr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to state two things to be very specific and very clear. The requirement to put the marquee back on the building does not hinder the development of this building. It does not hinder it in any way. This building, as part of the economic downtown plan and the master plan, can be developed and the marquee can be put back on the building. And it does not hinder the development of the building in any way. Second piece is that the HTC is in favor of the project. Everything else, as was stated, it had been approved. Every other ask that they had as part of their application was approved. And we are in favor of this building coming back to life. We are also asking that the condition is that the marquee gets put back on the building. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Appreciate that. Ms. Carr? You want to add on to your previous statement?
Yes. I just wanted to say that I think that to consider what kind of precedent this sets with overturning the HTC's decision in this matter and how it could possibly put the entire historic district in danger. And, yeah, that's really the main point. And then the one other thing was, I guess that's it. That's really all I wanted to say. To consider what kind of precedent this sets and that it doesn't, as what Patrick just said, that it doesn't hinder the project in any way and just seeks to preserve our town's history. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Michelle Norton. Oh, M-Nort3? Are you back? You're muted.
I'm muted now?
No, you're good.
All right.
Tell us who you are and what your connection is to the property, please.
My name is Michelle Norton. I am currently residing at what is now 10 Sanborn Street, but 30 years ago, it was 12 Sanborn Street in Exeter.
Okay.
Funny how times change. I just wanted to say that I was a member of all the HTC meetings and I really support the fact that they held to the historical aspect of buildings that should not be changed for historical aspects. I'm probably younger than a bunch of you guys, but I think it's really important that there was one definitive change in the HTC meetings where the marquee was taken down for temporary purposes. And I think that needs to be considered. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Norton. Okay. Lori Couture?
Hi, thank you, Chairman Pryor. Is it okay if I speak?
Well, no, it's not. We already said no. So nothing's changed within the last hour. I apologize for that, but nothing's changed. Oh, I'm gonna get in trouble for this one. I know it. Okay. I'm about to call a timeout because it's been two and a half hours and lower extremities are falling asleep here. So there's one new name left on the list and only identified as Robin. Robin going once?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, so...
You are...
I'm a Exeter resident. My name is Robin Muske. I live at 12 Cherry Street.
Go right ahead.
So I don't know about legal things and whatnot, but it seems as though some people have been speaking to whether or not the Ioka sign is of historical significance. I would like to point out that many things, like the Woolworths, which moved to its current location, oh, when was that? In 1934, then did place the, I don't know what it's called, on the sidewalk, a sign. It is still in place, I assume, because it is considered historically significant. Other things that don't have necessarily something you can see, but the incident, as it is often called, where the UFO thing, that is now part of our cultural history and has been incorporated, and that happened in 1965. So if those two things surrounding the timeframe of the Ioka sign are considered significant in any way, shape, or form to our culture here in this town, then the sign is as well. I don't know if that's particularly helpful, but that there are other things we can see and point to that are a part of everything.
I don't know that the incident in Exeter is protected by the HTC, but I thank you for your comments. It's much appreciated.
This is true. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Okay. One more name is Mark Detore. D-E-T-T-O-R-E, please.
Yes, Mark Detore, 3 Little Pine, Exeter.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I own also a property at 10 High Street as well. And my feeling is, is that this building has been, for lack of a better term, abandoned and needs a new breath of life to increase the values and the surrounding properties and to bring in newer, better businesses in the area. The marquee was specifically there for theater purposes. This building is no longer going to be a theater. And therefore, I disagree with Pat in saying that it actually will hinder its new identity. My other point is, is that we're really picking what is, in fact, part of history. We're ignoring what the first sign was previously. So I apologize. I had some technical difficulties and arrived a little late, if I'm being redundant. But I did want to speak on the developer's behalf. I think the new signage and the elevations that they proposed look wonderful and I welcome them into the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. I appreciate your comments. Karen Weeks, you wish to add something to your previous statement? Something different?
Yes, it's Karen Weeks. Yeah, so just to address that last gentleman, the 1915 sign no longer is in existence, as Patrick said. It would be, you would just have to make one up to be a copycat. The marquee is still in existence and has been on that building for 80 years. And like past, like John said earlier, I don't remember his last name, that the marquee, even if some people are saying that they don't like it, that's not significant, if people like it or not. It definitely represents the time in history that it was made and it is a great representation of the Art Deco period. So any argument that the old 1915 sign should go back up, it's impossible. It no longer exists. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yep. Thank you very much, Ms. Weeks. I appreciate it. So I am going to ask to close public session at this time. There are no further hands raised. I'm also gonna ask for a five-minute break. So unless there's an objection from anyone, we will take five minutes and reconvene at approximately 9:35.
Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am.
Am I going to be able to rebut after we...
Oh, absolutely. You're up next.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Great. See y'all in five.
And just a notice from Exeter TV, so you're all aware, we cannot pause the broadcast. So if you do not want to be seen, please do stop your video and mute yourselves before you walk away.
Back soon. I'm gonna leave.
Sharon's been pacing. Hey, watch her.
Oh, yeah?
Watch, back and forth.
I wonder if she's...
She's out.
I would say we're about ready to return, but I don't see Sharon at her, at her computer. So, we'll wait for her because she'll be the next speaker. Members of the board all back? I see Mr. Merrill, Ms. Sermon, Mr. Thielbar, there's also Murphy, and Ms. Davies is still, Ms. Davies is there, and Sharon's coming into frame. We're ready for you, Ms. Summers.
In these trying times of Zoom...
Yes, ma'am.
Communicating with one's client is a challenge.
I'll bet. We're, we're ready for your response to the public testimony.
Okay. Just bear with me a moment, please. All right. All right. It's, it's late, and so I'm going to try to keep this as short as I possibly can. I'd like to start off by saying that some of the comments that were made by the HDC Chair, Patrick Gordon, while I'm sure they were well-intentioned, are really not practically accurate. And by that, what I mean, two comments in particular that were made is that the proposed change of use has no relevance and no bearing, and that the marquee will not prevent the use that we proposed. He also said that the marquee will not hinder the development. I, it is, I cannot imagine a circumstance in which an analysis could, of this ordinance could occur without taking into account the fact that the project is not going to include a movie theater any longer. And as was pointed out earlier, the presence of the marquee will, in fact, hinder the development because, in our opinion, and including the opinion of our Realtor, the marketability of those residential units upstairs, which is so critical to our economic viability, will be negatively impacted. So, those statements are simply not accurate. Secondly, there were comments that were made about the, and I think perhaps by either Julie Gilman or Scott Hogan, or some combination of the above, of the significance of the letters from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance and Historic, the Division of Historic, the State Agency. And what I would say with regard to that is that those letters primarily simply encouraged the, both this board and the HDC, to take into account the Secretary of Interior guidelines. It did not mandate any particular directive or result for this board or the other board. And to, to try to comment as well on Scott Hogan's notion of the significance of those letters, I would also point to the, when this district and the building, when the district was created, the place on the National Register of Historic Districts in 1980, the application that we provided slides to earlier in the evening, we took a look at the language that supported that application, and the only reference in the, in the application materials to this building was that it was one of a series of buildings that were noted, and there was only one, only one mention of the marquee. So, to suggest that somehow there's this, this national repository indicating that this marquee is, has national significance is simply not accurate. The next thing that I'd like to talk about is that the provisions of the, either the zoning ordinance and the design guidelines, I think, again, need to be read in, in the context of a bunch of things. So, just again, briefly, the zoning ordinance, there was a lot of talk about the Section 8.2.1, and my response to that would be that, yes, we are conserving property values because we're retaining the value of this property, and part of that includes removing the marquee so that we can proceed with our proposal. One of the comments that I made, was made by, I think, Patrick Gordon, was that the marquee could be a draw to customers and so forth. No evidence was provided to support that contention, and in fact, we had, and a butter, Kristen Pullen, who was a business owner right there, saying just the opposite. Also, there were a number of comments about the marquee fostering civic pride, providing a vehicle for education and so forth, and we don't, we don't want to remove the educational opportunity in the history of the building, and in fact, we don't believe this needs to be an either-or proposition. The, there are other ways in which to impart the history of this building besides retaining the, the marquee. In fact, in one of the comments from the fellow, Joe Lewak, I apologize for mangling his name, talking about preserving a lot of the equipment that was in the, in the building, we applaud that, and we, in fact, plan and, and as part of our proposal, to have some sort of displays, or that kind of thing, in the lobby to really make it apparent to members of the public what this building historically is all about. In fact, we have an intent to use a mini-marquee, for lack of a better word, and believe me, if, if we could, we'd bring the marquee in the lobby, but it's too big. We do have kind of a mini-marquee, though, a little lit-up thing, which we will be including in the inside of the building. So, all of the points that were made about the civic pride and all that kind of stuff, they're all perfectly valid, but we have a solution to that, and it's to, to reference the history of the building from the inside and to take the marquee off to enable us to move forward with our proposal as we deem appropriate. Again, just on, on a very sort of, the contextual, the practical level of this, the zoning ordinance also talks about the fact that the, the purpose of the downtown district, historic district, is to preserve the scale and unique character of Exeter's downtown, to retain and enhance the commercial character. Well, the way you go about doing that is making sure that you have viable commercial operations down there. I think, I'm not gonna talk anything else about the, the ordinance itself. As for the, the design guidelines, which are, which are referenced also in the ordinance, one of the things that I would point out is that we haven't heard anything, unless I missed something, about, one of the sections of the design guidelines deals specifically with guidelines for commercial properties. And that talks about the fact that Exeter's vibrance is linked to the viability of the business and the institutions. Every effort will be made to assist commercial building owners and tenants with revitalizing older retail areas, helping to attract new customers, et cetera. It talks about the fact that the goals for the commercial properties are to encourage the consideration of how a proposed storefront and sign or awning relates to each property, the streetscape and the historic concept, context, excuse me. We have done that, as we have indicated here tonight. This section of the design guidelines also goes on to talk about many of the other issues that we'd already touched upon, the fact that one has to consider feasibility and, and restoration, and, and it provides, sets out various ways in which one can go about doing it. But it also talks about the fact that some things are simply going to require excessive, significant amounts of either repair or even replacement. So, I think that in terms of considering the design guidelines, it's important for this board to take into account the specific section that deals with the commercial properties. And so, I think that with that, unless my clients want me to mention anything else, I don't have anything to rebut. I would simply ask that this board take into consideration the fact that we are, in fact, doing our very best to save this building, and for all the reasons that have been set forth tonight by members of the public and us, we would encourage this board to reverse the finding of the HDC relative to the condition of approval and to otherwise allow our application to go forward. I'd be happy to answer any further questions that you may have, and I sincerely appreciate your time. I know this has been a very long evening. I myself will probably be asleep in about 15 minutes. So, thank you.
Well, if you're asleep in 15 minutes, you'll miss the end of the meeting. I just want to quickly survey, before we close public session, the members of the board. Do you have any further questions for the applicant? Mr. Merrill, you good? Nod assent. Mr. Thielbar, questions for the, for the applicant?
I have no questions for the applicant.
Ms. Sermon?
I just had a quick one, just in reference to what some, what someone, one of the callers said, the notion that the, the marquee would be, quote, "destroyed." I don't necessarily think that the, that the architects or the, or the developers have ever, have ever said that. In fact, they showed the picture of it sitting in the garage, well-preserved, and I don't want to go down a different path, but I think that marquee could be repurposed in some manner and still retain it and not necessarily have to be on the building. So, I just, I didn't want people to think that just, if they just caught that word about destroyed, I don't think they ever said that, and they can certainly respond to that themselves. That, that was, that was one thing I just wanted to get clarified.
Do you want me to respond to that?
Please.
Yes. The, the, the marquee currently is in a, in a safe storage location, and it's protected from the elements and all that kind of thing. And we have previously indicated that we will be happy, we will hold on to it for six months following whatever the decision may be, in case anyone does want to get it. We have all, also offered to the Exeter Historical Society, and I believe they have accepted or expressed interest in getting ahold of the letters on the, the marquee. So, we are absolutely committed to finding this a good home and/or the, the letters from the marquee. So, no, it's, it's not, we have no intention of, of just destroying it, and we'd love to see it go to a, a forever home.
Ms. Summers, a clarification, if you would please. My understanding is that the letters referenced are the Ioka, IOKA, which were on each face of the, above each face. One set of those is proposed to be used on the building. Those exact letters are to be used on the building, or are they gonna be replicated on the building?
I believe it's going to be the exact letters, and, and Adam or one of the other people can speak to this more carefully than I can, but I think that what we need to do is that we need to look at the letters to see, to see which ones are in the best shape to be able to figure out which ones are gonna go on the building.
The one set of the IOKAs will be used on the building.
Yeah.
Really, the sign board is what's available.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, that is... Do you want to verify that?
Mr. Chairman, that is the intent, that, that one set of the letters be used for the signage on the building.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Sermon, your hand is still raised. Are you, are you done? Are you all right? You're all set? Ms. Davies, any questions for the applicant?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, then. I'm gonna close public session, and we are gonna move into deliberation. So, everybody's welcome to stick around, but this is the boring bits where we, the five of us talk to ourselves, or the six of us talk to ourselves. Again, all six members of the board who are present are, are welcome to participate in the deliberation, and five of us will be voting. So, here we are at the end of a very, very long evening, faced with an interesting decision.
You want me to throw in my two cents worth?
Mr. Thielbar would welcome that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, I, I'm a, I'm a newbie here. We've only been here for 19 years, and the Ikaa marquee has been a monument to failure. The building is falling down, and the, there is a significant problem with the building even without the sign. The side of the building that has the common wall, has, the apartment that goes in, in that face, has only three windows total. And if you put that sign in front of two of the three windows, I don't care what the, the people who love the signs say, nobody is gonna want to live in that place. And so, we're not talking about, do we do the project without the sign, or do we do the project with the sign? We're looking at a situation where if they have to have the sign up, they're gonna have a great deal of difficulty having the project, project go ahead. We're not talking about the sign, we're talking about the project. And it's just naive to think that you can put that kind of a burden on the, on the folks trying to save the building. So, I'm gonna quit talking. I think you know what I think.
Thank you, Mr. Thielbar. Appreciate that. Anybody else?
Well, I'd like to say something. I'm confused and concerned about a couple of the statements made by the Historic District Commission members about how it, it will, retaining the sign will not affect the development, it will not hinder the development, and it clearly will impact marketability of the units, whose, whose view is gonna be obstructed, particularly if the sign is lit at night. I mean, who's gonna sleep next to those windows that have neon light, you know, five feet away? feet away? And then there was also some kind of indication that no historic feature need, that it's not necessary, or that it's necessary, that the retaining historic feature shouldn't be related to whether or not it serves the use, the new use. And I'm not an expert in historic features and historic districts and architecture, but I do know real estate, and I know the master plan, and I know the zoning ordinance, and I know the goals of the town, and I don't understand how that could be true and be consistent with these other things. If a building that's been struggling has a new use, that's a good use, that's a use that's envisioned in the master plan, and historic feature doesn't have to serve it, you know, it comes in conflict with the new use, I think that's a problem. And I do think that the developer did a good job with maintaining the historic significance of the building. And, you know, I respect these people that have put a lot of work into this from the Historic District Commission, but I don't, they haven't made their case to me. I don't understand where they're coming from. Their priority seems to be only on retaining the historic features and almost at the expense of the rest of the building, and I don't, I don't understand how that is practicable, who's going to pay for it, and what that does to help the town. So that's my two cents.
You said that way better than I did.
Did I?
Yeah.
Thank you. I didn't think so.
Thank you, Laura. I appreciate that. Esther, any comments or questions at this stage?
Yes, my big thing is, I understand what everybody's saying, but it is one of those things where, once it's gone, it's gone. We're talking about bringing back the old, original sign, but we can't because it's gone. There's nothing left to restore. So that's what's getting me, is I do, I like the new design. I've been here my entire life. I've been on top of that marquee. I've had my happy 16th birthday on that marquee. I have attachment to it, and that's what, but I like the other look better. But, once it's gone, it's gone. Like the drugstore sign, there's one of those up in Hanover or somewhere, Hennecker, those old Rexall drugstore signs, and it's gorgeous. Ours is gone. We can't get it back. That's, that's the struggle.
It's an interesting tension. I mean, I think we all have emotional attachments. I have an emotional attachment, not so much to the sign as I do to the theater, but that ship has sailed. It's not going to be a theater anymore. Do I still have memories of seeing movies there with my, you know, with my father, with my parents when I was a child? But we, you know, we have to separate the emotional and the practical here, and that's a challenge. It's a challenge for all of us.
I completely agree.
Mr. Merrill, did you want to chime in with anything at this stage of the game, or? You're muted, Christopher. Still muted. Bottom left, where it says mute. He's much better in person, I assure everyone. Okay, well, Chris is working on that. Oh, man, we can't even, how are you going to vote? We can't even hear you. Esther, stick around. You may have to vote, only because we can't get a yes or a no out of Mr. Merrill. I love it. I think there's some interesting things here. Laura, you hinted at something very interesting, and I noticed that, you know, the 8.9, for example, that one of the speakers referenced 8.9 and read from it, not one of the speakers, one of the members of the public, and cherry picked what they said. What it says is, "The Historic District Commission in making decisions shall apply the above paragraphs and consider the downtown master plan and the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines." The person who read that to us only mentioned the Secretary of the Interior. I think that we do need to recognize the economic viability of the downtown, as mentioned in the Exodus Master Plan, as well as the preservation of social and cultural and other resources. I think we also need to separate historic from iconic. And while I'm not prepared to offer a definition of either, I believe that we have a situation here where we've done a, we've blurred historic and iconic. And yeah, is the marquee an icon of the town? Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I can think of businesses that have it on their placemats or on their business cards, or that sort of thing, and they still will have it. And it will still, and it may, the signboard itself may still appear somewhere else in town. There's no doubt about that. So I think it's our charge to try to separate some of these issues, to tease it apart, and to reach a reasonable decision. There seems to be less discussion, although Mr. Merrill is moving about and is, I believe, trying to figure out how he can unmute his computer, listening to me talk about him, which is an unusual situation, all these modern problems that we have.
Maybe you should try some insults, inspire him to respond.
Yo, Merrill. So we're not going to, we're not going to get him back, I don't think, here.
I think maybe he's trying to wake somebody up who knows how to run the machine.
I think he is. He's starting to wake up a family member who knows more technology than he does. I got a 17-year-old I can send over, Chris.
Sure, I could use that. No, what you were just talking about, where, you know, there were business, I don't know, logos with the Ioka, with the marquee on them, it reminded me of the state symbol, the old man in the mountain, and how, you know, that was so iconic for our state, but it crumbled, and we can't make it stay. It's gone, unfortunately. It's still very important to us, and it still matters to us, but, you know, you can't make some things stick around anymore. And I guess that's what I thought of when you mentioned that, for whatever that's...
I believe I have good news here. Mr. Merrill, did you wish to speak to us? Do you have any questions, sir?
Hold on one sec.
He's climbing the stairs.
You got to give him time to catch his breath after you get...
My question would be, why hasn't anybody bought and taken care of the sign? Everybody thought it was historical. Everybody thought that, you know, this had to be taken care of, yet nobody did anything.
Well, it hasn't been offered for sale. It has been offered by the current owners of the building as a donation, and I would expect that they're, whether it's the town itself or someone else...
And nobody did anything to it.
Right.
I mean, if all these people want it so badly, I mean, Mrs. Couture thinks it's, whatever you want to say, but it's been distant for six or seven or eight years, she never did anything to this, and now all of a sudden, she wants it back up.
I'm gauging some pretty strong sentiments on the board. Is there any further discussion?
Mrs. Chair, one quick thing.
Yes, Ms. Sermon.
And this, it's about the marquee. It was also, oh, two quick things. I just wanted, the last thing I want to say to sort of sum it up was, this building is being repurposed. If it were still going to be a theater, that would be one thing, but it is being repurposed, and I think that's another reason why the marquee just doesn't even, it doesn't even really fit with what these folks are doing, and they've got a beautiful thing figured out for it. But however the vote goes ultimately, I wanted to make sure that there is a hook on that building that is key to the Christmas lights that go up every year, those strands that go up every year. So I want to be on the record that if they could please, before any kind of other work is done, or whenever it's done, just please allow that hook to stay, or if they take it out, if we could, please go back, because it's integral for the strands across the street. And I was around when Jerry Hamel and others first put those strands up, so I'd be remiss if I didn't put a plug in there for that.
Mr. Cowery or Mr. Caswell, can we get an affirmation of that, please?
You can have the hook all you want.
There you go.
We need the hook to stay there, so we can continue with the strand up.
You can put the Christmas lights up, because there's no...
Exactly. Very fragile. I don't want the hook. I want the hook to stay there.
All right, Adam, you're on warning. Keep the hook.
Somebody offered to give me the hook one time.
Yeah, that was, that was me. Nobody took, I lost that vote, three to two. I would accept the motion.
So I don't know when we, when we have this kind of appeal, when we grant, what are we granting? What are we approving?
I got to find, hang on a sec. So the motion would be either to accept or reject the application, and then you would simply read...
Read the rest, okay.
The rest. So it would be the entire statement on the, on the agenda.
If you wanted to keep the marquee, you would approve the application for appeal from administrative decision, and if you didn't want the marquee to stay, you would deny the appeal for the application. Is that correct?
No, you got that backwards.
I got it backwards, okay.
Ms. Summers?
Sharon.
Is the board comfortable that I ask Ms. Summers for a legal clarification? We have closed public session. I would ask that she come back in with a legal opinion on how we would phrase, not that she gives us which direction we should move, but how to phrase this so we get it correct. Is everybody all right with that?
I think it's essential that we do that.
Ms. Summers, please.
Mr. Chairman, could you read me, just so I make sure I have the information correct, could you read me the announcement that you gave at the beginning of the meeting, so that I can, that'll help me try to answer this question?
Yes, ma'am. The application of Ioka Properties LLC for an appeal from an administrative decision made by the Historic District Commission at their July 16 meeting, relative to proposed improvements to the existing structure, indicated at 50, located at 53 Water Street. It's not clear, is it? Not definitive.
I stand by my statement. I think that if you want the marquee to, you can approve the application of Ioka Properties for an appeal.
I think we should state clearly what it is that we would like to do, rather than simply referencing the agenda item.
I agree. Your, if you, my opinion is that I would agree with that. I think that the, I think the agenda item is a little bit too unclear. I would say that have someone move to approve the appeal, the applicant's appeal.
I think we got, I think we got it. I don't think you should go any further. I think you're on the edge of leading us.
Yeah, I know. I understand that. I understand. But that's, I think Laura is correct.
Right.
Thanks, Sharon.
So I think that what it would be important to do, Laura, if you were gearing up to make a motion, is to reference the document, which is the Certificate of Appropriateness, that was issued by the HTC on July 16. It says that I think we should reference and specifically state whether or not we wish to, it's your motion, so you get to phrase it. Do you have that document?
I'm sure I do, but I'm not finding it immediately.
The first page of the document says Town of Exodus ZBA Appeal. It's a, it has the, it's a Donahue Tucker, and it has the double rule down the side of the, both sides.
Okay.
And it's the second-to-last page of that paper-clipped staple document.
Okay.
Find it?
Yes, I did find it. Thank you.
Where it says that the Ioka letters and the signboard below must remain in its current location on the front of the mayor building.
Okay, I think I can do this.
All right, so...
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the application of Ioka Properties LLC for an appeal from an administrative decision made by the Historic District Commission regarding the Ioka marquee, overturning the decision that the signboard must remain. Was that clear enough?
I'll second that, but I'd like to discuss it a little bit.
That's fine. I wanted to get a second first. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
So Ioka Properties made it pretty clear in their presentation that they were willing to provide the sign on the side of the building and also the thing that sticks out, what do you call that?
Blade sign?
Canopy. No, the canopy.
The canopy.
Yeah.
If we, if we quit where we are here, some fast-talking guy might say, well, hell, they said we don't have to put the sign up, we don't have to put the, do the other things we offered in alternate, and I just want to make sure that we don't leave that door open.
Would you like to offer an amendment to Laura's motion?
Yes, but I don't know how to say it.
I think it would say something like, and to affirm that the signage as presented in the application to the ZBA is what will be used on the building.
Good. I so move, or offer amendment, or whatever. Somebody's checking it.
Ms. Summers.
Listen.
You just muted yourself.
Okay, all right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I think I may have a way to try to simplify this for you. The appeal itself, the relief that we asked for, was to reverse the decision in that the, that you grant approval for the application is presented on July 16, 2020. In other words, yeah, the application itself presented to the HTC included our proposal for what we wanted to have assigned, so I think if you simply say that what you're doing is to reverse the decision about the marquee and that you are authorizing us to proceed with the proposal as presented on July 16, that should, that should be clear.
That is true. In other words, the Historic District said they liked everything, except they wanted to keep the marquee, so that if we can say it's okay to take the marquee off, the original proposal that the HTC criticized is what ends up being what's accepted.
Specifically, the July 16, if you mute yourself, Ms. Summers, please, specifically the July 16 iteration, because there were three separate plans, one with a blade, one with a different form of a, we want to go back to the seven, I'm hearing you say that you want to go back to the 716. Ms. Davies, may I ask, would you like to withdraw your motion and make a new one, or do you want to modify? I saw you taking notes.
I can withdraw and make a new motion. We don't need to vote on that. We haven't voted on the first motion.
No, we haven't voted on anything yet. Mr. Thielbar, with you, will you withdraw your second of the original motion?
Yes.
Ms. Davies, would you like to make a new motion?
Okay. I move that we approve the appeal from an administrative decision and, based on the application as presented at the Historic District Commission meeting of July 16, 2020. So adequate?
It seems like there's a word missing in there somewhere.
Yeah, I think there is something missing as well. I wish we had the recording secretary to read it back to us. Barb, you didn't write that down, did you?
Oh, I didn't talk about the marquee.
Don't we need to say, reverse the decision of the...
Yeah.
Of the...
Yeah, we got to write this down and get it right, kids.
Okay.
Right. So there's no, no second on that.
Well, I've struck out twice.
Why don't we just, why don't we pause, why don't we pause for a moment while Laura writes this down? And you're welcome to talk it through without making an official motion, if you'd like to get our opinions.
So you, we want to say that we're reversing the decision on the certi, of, on the Certificate of Appropriateness issued on July 16th, 2020 in regards to the marquee remaining, but that we approve the remainder of the application as presented. Does that, is that closer to what we're looking for?
I will say the remainder.
We're approving the entire submission.
Of July 16th. Which includes in it everything that the HTC has already agreed to, plus we're reversing the condition of approval that states that the Ioka Marquee must remain.
Okay. Okay, I am, I move that we approve the application of Ioka Properties LLC as presented in the July 16th, 2020 Historic District Commission meeting, but reverse the condition of approval related to the marquee remaining on the building. Is that better?
I'm sorry, Laura, and it feels incomplete.
Okay.
How did you start it? Go ahead.
Well, I don't remember.
Joanna Bartel is gonna have a blast with this one. She's our recording secretary.
So, so maybe we can do it with more than one sentence. If we say that we grant the appeal to the...
Well, go ahead.
To the administrative decision by the HTC requiring...
Right, I think that's where you gotta read what's on there. How did you start it, Laura? We approve, what was it, which way was it?
The application of Ioka Properties LLC...
For an appeal from an administrative decision made by the HTC at their July 16th, 2020 meeting.
Okay. And instead of saying relative to the proposed improvements, we would say relative to the condition of approval regarding the, regarding retaining the marquee.
I think we should phrase it more positively, "And overturn the condition of approval that..."
Requires, yeah.
Regarding the marquee. So what we're specific, what you're specifically looking for is to overturn the condition of approval that was included on the July 16th decision. And you could even say, "And further, we accept that the plan as presented at the July 16th meeting is approved."
Well, that, I think, makes it more muddy, actually.
No, I think that was Rick's point, that we want to go back to the specific instantiation of the plan from July 16th, as presented by the HTC, and we're essentially accepting it in total, as opposed to with a condition of approval.
Yes.
Okay, but I've said remove with, remove the condition of approval, and that hasn't...
That's great, that's fine, good. If you're good, you got July 16th in there and you're removing the condition of approval. You know what's interesting is that many zoning boards, they don't even do the motions on the same night as they do the hearings. They actually spend a lot more time discussing motions than we do.
Well, I think I brought it up once, that we, someone I know that I work with is on the zoning board, and they have a template for their motions, so that they don't forget stuff and leave things out, which I think we should talk about sometime.
I just mentioned that only because the people who are watching this are going, "Boy, this bunch is flailing about madly and has no idea what they're talking about." We just want to get it right. We just want to get it right.
Well, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, so, are you ready?
What do we have? Let's read it one more time.
Well, I don't think we have a transcript at this point, but I think the motion said that we, I move that we approve the application of Ioka Properties LLC for an appeal from an administrative decision made by the Historic District Commission at their July 16th, 2020 meeting relative to the...
Stop at relative to and say, "And we remove the condition of approval."
With, yes, and removing the condition of approval that the Ioka Marquee and letters remain on the building.
Remain in its current location on the front of the mayor building. Good. Seconded.
I second.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
I have a question.
Mr. Merrill?
What are we gonna say about the marquee, what's not going back up? Should we give it a specific time before they just, something happens to it? Like, should they offer it to people, Historical Society?
It's not a condition of approval, I don't think, Mr. Merrill, and we have on record the attorney for the applicant stating that the marquee would be retained for a period of six months and that it would be offered for donation. And that's part, that would be part of the minutes of this meeting, and therefore would be part of the public record. Is that satisfactory to you, sir?
That sounds satisfactory to me, sir.
Any further discussion?
Is there issue with the statement that the letters don't have to be on the front of the building when they're proposing, the letters are going on the front of the building, just not on the marquee?
I think that the reference to July six, application of July 16th means that the version, that that version, Esther, has the letters on the building.
The motion said the letters don't have to go back on the building.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't, it says that the, that the marquee and the letters must remain in its current location on the front of the building.
So, so, the point that I raised the issue in the first place was the proposal included mounting one set of the letters on the side of the building, and I didn't want to lose that.
Correct, on the front of the building, absolutely. Right, no, that's part of our decision, is we're referencing the application of July 16th, which includes one set of letters on the front of the building with a light overhead, which I, I mean, that's, that's, that's the version that's being approved. I'm sure there will be further wrangling over setbacks of doors and other things, but basically, the plan as proposed on July 16th is being approved. Any further discussion? I will call the vote then. This is gonna be a vote by roll call, am I correct that Mr. Merrill is voting and Ms. Olson-Murphy is not?
Yes.
Correct, okay. So, looking across my screen, Mr. Merrill?
I vote yes.
Mr. Thielbar?
Yes.
Ms. Sermon?
Aye.
Ms. Davies?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Decision is overturned five-zero. I'm sorry to see it go, but we're moving on.
Thank you very much for all your time and attention to this, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks to everyone who participated. We have one more piece of business for the zoning board, which is the approval of minutes of August 18th, 2020. If, if there's nothing pressing on that, I mean, do we want to move on? Or does, does somebody want to...
I've read it, and it looked fine to me.
There were, there were a couple little, little things. I'm finding it. It's, wait, do you want to go through it or not?
Yeah, let's, because you know what? This could be relevant to the, to the Curtis application coming back.
Okay.
And then Doug and Barb want to go home.
I do too, well, I am home, but I want to be done. Okay, well, line 35, they believe there is adequate site distance. It's S-I-G-H-T, not S-I-T-E, different type of site.
Good point, S-I-G-H-T, okay? Yep?
Page, next page, line 58. It says, "According to the witness test pits." Is that intended to be witnessed, as in witnessed by someone from the town?
Probably.
Is that what that means, Doug?
Witness test pits, I don't know what a witness test pit is.
I think that someone's supposed to witness the digging of the test pits, so that would be witnessed, E.D. Is that, I mean, I'm not sure, I'll just come figure it out.
What line is it, Laura?
58.
I didn't know test pits had to be witnessed.
Yeah, I do.
Wasn't he implying that he saw them, so he witnessed, they were existing in place?
Yeah.
And that's, because they haven't done a proper survey there.
Right, so it's probably witnessed, it is probably E.D. Yes. Okay.
Okay.
E.D.
I was just, yeah, going from the context, I think that's what that was supposed to be. And then, line 106 on the next page, it is Curtis Tree, not Street Care.
Curtis Tree Care, correct.
And that, I think, is all I have. Because I didn't finish reading it, to be honest.
Mr. Thielbar, you said you read it and you didn't have any specific corrections?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept the minutes as amended of the August 16th, August 18th, 2020 meeting?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second?
As amended.
As amended.
Yes, that's what I meant to say.
Yes, and I, okay, and you've seconded.
Moved and seconded, Prior, Thielbar, Davies, Sermon, and Olson-Murphy, all. So we've got five of us that were there, so we're all set. Show of, show of hands, approved? We're done.
Okay.
Deck of knowledge. Five-zero. I'd like to thank all of you for participating this evening. It's gone, I fought remarkably well from a technical standpoint. So Natasha and Daniel, thank you both very, very much for administrative work this evening. It went really, really well, and I appreciate everything that you've both done. I know one of you at least is listening from home there, even though you're muted. So take a bow, and motion to adjourn.